All right, we're going to come to order. Today is the regular meeting, the Wednesday, December 1st, 2010, regular meeting in the Glendale Planning Commission. Could you call roll, please?
Here.
Here.
Chair.
Hi. Here, rather. A report regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, November 24th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
All right. Would everyone please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two meeting minutes to seek approval. First is the special meeting of November 17th, 2010.
I move.
Second.
Motion support. Call roll, please.
Hi.
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 Hi. And then we have minutes.
Six o'clock special.
That was emailed.
Right, sorry, I just opened up the wrong folders. It was confusing me. Right, and then we have the special meeting at 6:00 PM.
I move.
Second.
Motion support. Call roll, please.
Abstain.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. On a vote of three to zero with one abstention, the minutes of November 17th, 2010, the special meeting with the joint TPC and PC were approved. I'll move to Agenda Item 5. It's Oral Communications. I have none. We have nothing under zoning appeals, and so we'll move to New Business, under 7A. And I'm speaking slowly on the hope that our fifth commissioner joins us without having to go into a brief recess. It is used variance case PVAR 2010-015. The location is 671 West Broadway. The applicant is Nicholas Oatway, and has a request for a used variance to operate a 1,567 square foot billiards establishment in the IMU zone where billiard establishments are not permitted. The recommendation from staff is that we deny the proposed use variance case, PVAR 2010-015. And staff is represented by Gabriel Riza. And could we get an overview of the case, please?
Yes. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, the proposal is for the applicant has filed a variance to allow a 1,567 square foot billiard hall establishment located in an industrial-commercial mix-use zone where that said use is not permitted. The site is a mid-block development located within a 12,744 square foot multi-tenant building. A brief description over the existing conditions of the site. The site is split into two lots and is 18,970 square feet. Previous building permits indicate a total of six tenant spaces which all appear to be vacant based on a site visit. The lot has 11 onsite parking spaces which has direct access from Broadway. On August 7th, 2008, a zoning use certificate was obtained by the owner for a restaurant with counter service. At that time, staff imposed two conditions. Those two conditions are as follows. The first condition, no more than eight seats shall be permitted for the site. And condition number two, that the sales service and alcoholic beverages requires approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant proposes to provide additional seating and does not intend to apply for the onsite sales consumption and service and consumption of alcohol beverages. There are no outstanding code violations regarding the building or the site. Onto the analysis of the variance request. The property is located in the IMU industrial-commercial mix-use zone. The intent of the IMU zone is to allow and attract industrial and commercial activities that provide a range of goods and services to the community. A variety of commercial uses are also allowed in this zone. The practical difficulties associated with this case as presented by the applicant are self-imposed and mainly financial in nature. They are not land use related. The applicant states that the proposed billiard establishment is not allowed in the zone but does not indicate how a denial of this application would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. The proposal is inconsistent with the general purpose and the intent of the zoning code and general plan. Excuse me. The applicant states that this property is unique by its close proximity to residential areas and that this proximity is a great opportunity for customers to participate in billiard hall activities. Staff believes that this is not a unique circumstance, that there are many other lots throughout the city that are close to residential uses and are zoned to conditionally permit billiard establishments. The applicant has stated that approximately five billiard tables can fit within the tenant space. Furthermore, the site contains only 11 parking spaces which may not accommodate the amount of customers a billiards hall with tables and food service may attract. Staff believes this fact could trigger a greater parking demand which could be detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant states that the granting of the variance will be in keeping with the objectives of the applicable regulations because the recreational use will provide a safe location for people to socialize. Staff believes while this is not in keeping with the objections of the ordinance, that there are many other areas in the city more appropriate for a billiards use that can be provided in recreational opportunities that the applicant wishes to provide. For these reasons, staff recommends the denial of this application. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Planning Commission may have at this time, sir.
Mr. Lee.
I noticed that there was an existing restaurant that, you know, establishment was approved for.
Correct.
Did the original zoning certificate have CUP for alcohol sales on that premise?
No, sir.
I noticed that there was a bar there.
It appears to be a bar, but it's no sales or service of alcoholic beverages are onsite.
So there was never a CUP issued for that site?
No, sir.
Or any?
No, no previous. No.
Anything else for staff at this time? Ms. Landrigan.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the San Fernando corridor project area and objectives that the redevelopment agency has? It had a brief description on the report, but if you can elaborate, that would be great.
I can read into the record a little bit about that. I have small, very minimal knowledge of the true intent, perhaps. I can ask for assistance on that, but I can read into the record what was in the report.
I think we've read the report. Mr. Foyle, why don't you step up to the plate and expand on that.
The San Fernando redevelopment quarter was established a number of years ago when it was largely a base in industrial and commercial activities. I think about five years ago, roughly, where we did some rezoning of that corridor to introduce these kinds of mixed-use zones, and we also looked at just general industrial zones, even if they're not included in that area. And at that time, the zoning in that area that was to be most like a commercial zone was the SFMU, so the San Fernando mixed-use zone, which was in the areas that most closely resembled, they had the most potential for kind of a lively pedestrian area. And that's the zone in the San Fernando corridor where you would see the greatest variety and the easiest permits for a really wide variety of commercial uses. The other two zones, and they were IMUR, which is industrial-mixed-use residential, and then just IMU, industrial-mixed-use. Obviously, in the one that allows residential, you would want to have more interaction and kind of more, I'm sorry, more kinds of commercial uses which would be compatible with residential and where people who live in the area could obtain services in close proximity to where they live. The IMU zone by comparison was one which had allowed a more restricted range of commercial and those kinds of uses which would seem to be less compatible with residential. So this is in the IMU zone, which in that, you know, range of zones that I just described is the one that's probably furthest away from the traditional commercial zoning category, if that helps.
Just to add to that, even though it's stated here, it's not in keeping with the intent of the San Fernando Road Corridor project area. This particular location is not actually in the San Fernando corridor development area or project area. Am I correct?
No, it is. It is. It is in.
So the boundary actually goes up Broadway and captures that?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Okay. I'm not sure enough to question that, but I know that they pretty much stayed to the buffer alleys and directly along San Fernando, and it did.
It jogged slightly on Broadway.
Okay, just for clarity. Thank you.
Ms. Landrigan.
I see here on the floor plan, Exhibit 4, four billiard tables, and yet I heard and read that the applicant believes five billiard tables will fit in there. Can you describe the discrepancy or explain it to me?
In conversation with the applicant, there are possibilities of a future tenant improvement to allow a little bit of square footage. I can describe it on the best as I approach the board. There is possibility that this area right here may turn in to be squared off into this area. The one thing that's holding us back, I believe on the opposite side of this, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, that there is a vault there. That may be more difficult to announce. So in conversation with the applicant, we would like to, he wishes to request five billiard tables, but four tables would still be in keeping. But as an anticipated tenant improvement, it would be five.
For clarity, would you, this, the line you were talking about, how does it fit in? Where does it actually locate?
The hash marks.
This would be here. This is the hash marks, right.
So, and what is the address of that location?
This entire site is at 671.
Although it's addressed 675.
Six, I'm sorry.
The front of this building, this portion has 675 on it. I know it's two lots together. This building has 671 and this building has 675. So I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure out which building, which correct address.
It's 671.
You really, you can't speak from the audience. That's all right. You'll have time later if you need.
I don't know that it even matters, but I just want to know, it's distinctly addressed as 675. So as long as we know, in fact, if you look at the picture, you can almost pick out the address at the top of the stairway.
Yes, I can.
But it was noted as 671. It's legally 671. Everything we have in front of us is 671, so at least that's consistent, other than the address.
Other than the building has 675.
Right, right.
Site, yeah. Okay. That's good for me right now.
So what's the existing billiards that are over there right now? Is it just two?
Just two. Just two tables. As you enter, this would be the best description, these two tables are there right now.
But that's not a permitted use as it is, correct? Or is it?
It is a permitted use. A restaurant can allow a minimum, actually a maximum of two tables.
So it's in compliance with the two?
Correct.
Can you show me how you enter? You just, you know, at the back.
So off of Broadway, right here, you pass through the parking lot, and you enter through here, this front door. Okay. So once you're at this open corridor area, that's this door right here. Enter through here. You walk through another corridor, another lobby area.
Another lobby.
Another lobby area, and then you then enter the site.
Okay.
Question. You said the two billiard tables could be allowed for the restaurant, and I think the original, which we don't have a copy of the zoning certificate, but, you know, but it was supposed to have five serving tables as a restaurant. I think that's what the application said, you know, in lieu of five tables, that they wanted to put, you know, five billiard tables. Now, so in your inspection, I think you wrote down that you went out there, inspected the place. Did you notice that this was, so I guess what I'm asking is that two billiard tables are incidental to the use as a restaurant?
Yes.
My observation was that it was more of a billiard place than the restaurant, because there was no serving tables there, other than the just place where you can sit down.
Just the counter.
What was your observation?
When I went in there, it was vacant at my time. I went unannounced with a code enforcement officer. The tables were not being used and the seats were not being used. Even if I went hours.
Oh, but there were five tables there?
Yes, there were five tables. They are conditioned to only have a maximum of eight, and I saw no more than eight.
So you showed the entrance.
Yes, sir.
And then, so they traveled through parts of the building that are not part of, what does the "not part of" mean?
Well, they described this as a lobby area. They essentially passed through two lobby areas to get to.
So the other, the parts of this building that say "not part of," are they another business or they?
Actually, they're vacant. They're vacant at this moment.
My question is, since the floor plan shows that four will be in there, why would it be prudent for us to approve five for the square footage there is, anticipating an addition?
Good question. And to further clarify, the 1569 is the footprint we see, not the potential addition of square footage, correct?
That's correct. That's the current square footage.
Anything else this moment?
I guess, I want a clarification. I don't even know if you can answer. The sign that's there now talks about something other than, games other than pool. So the games are Russian and English games and game tables? Is that what, is that relating to snooker tables or?
Yes, they are snooker tables. Yes. And the applicant will describe that, that it would be snooker.
All right. Is there a reason why there's a maximum of two billiard tables required, allowed for restaurants? I mean, why have them at all or why two?
No.
Or why not four or five?
Reason that the zoning code does have that indication as far as two being the magic number to not classify this as a billiard.
And it's not based on size or anything? It's just if you have a restaurant, no matter how big it is, two is the maximum?
That's correct. That's how it reads, sir. That's two. A thousand square feet will get two.
I think we're okay with you sitting down. We still have questions, but I get nervous with you standing behind.
Are you Scott?
Exactly. Ms. Landrigan, did you have a question?
I'd like to continue in Mr. Usain's vein here. The San Fernando corridor is a mixed-use corridor, and now that it snakes up on Broadway, my question is, is that in that mixed use, there is some entertainment use, am I correct? I mean, I've seen the roller derby place and other entertainment and venues like that. Why is this different than that? That's my question.
Why was this entertainment use excluded from the zone as opposed to others?
Yeah.
Honestly, this rezoning was done before I started working here. I don't, I'm not sure exactly how they came down to that distinction.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, it's arguable.
Roller rink has been there forever, so my guess is that it was there before the zoning, and it just got captured in that.
Well, and I guess part of the question is, under current zoning, would a roller skating rink be a permitted use in the IM? Just as an example.
I guess that's the question.
And while you're looking at that, I'd love to, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Foyle, reading some of the, let's call it entertainment or restaurant type of permitted uses in IM.
Sure. I would imagine that a roller rink, I don't know about roller derby, but a roller rink is, would probably be considered indoor recreation center, which is conditionally permitted. You needed CUP. Under recreation in this zone, we have community gardens, which are permitted, and the rest of the uses that I'm going to read out all need a condition use permit. Gyms and health clubs, indoor recreation centers, nightclubs, outdoor commercial recreation like a batting cage, private clubs and lodges, taverns and theaters. The types of entertainment uses that are permitted in other, that are in commercial zones that are not allowed here are, in addition to billiard establishments, arcade establishments and cyber cafes. Comparing it against a
Then again, I didn't.
Cyber cafes, billiard establishments and arcade establishments.
Are permitted here?
No.
Are not?
They're not, although they are permitted in commercial zones.
Hold on, hold on.
Was there anything else she wanted to say? All right, then Mr. Lee and then Mr. Usain.
The question is that the use variance that's being applied here, you know, obviously two billiard tables are allowed for a restaurant. So are they asking for four billiard tables as a restaurant? Or are they completely going away from the restaurant and converting the establishment, you know, as a billiard establishment 100%? Because, you know, obviously then the code says you cannot have that. But are we considering variance that you could have two billiard tables as a restaurant? Then if they keep as a restaurant status, then I guess we'll be doing the variance on four billiard tables. So that's the fundamental, I guess, question that I have.
Let's have staff weigh in on that definition.
The applicant is proposing to keep the bar, the restaurant facilities, the food preparation facilities, as you will, but he did indicate that the billiards hall or the billiards will be the primary use in that building.
Yes, let me rephrase my question. I guess when we look at this thing, obviously, you know, what we heard, the code is very clear as to what is allowed and what is not allowed. But, you know, also, we are allowing maximum two tables to the restaurant. But, you know, also, we are allowing maximum two tables to the restaurant. So, you know, going, you know, coming back, if they are keeping the food service, is that still considered, even though their, you know, service might be oriented with the, you know, the billiards, part of the business? If they still serve the food, is that still considered as a restaurant?
No, it would be considered as a billiards hall.
I think it's a definition, and it probably is related to incidental.
That's correct. It's an incidental service related to a billiards hall establishment.
So right now, then, my observation was.
Well, or frankly, I'm sorry, or the two tables are incidental to a restaurant.
That's correct.
So then, my observation right now is that, as is right now, that, when I walked in there, it was not a restaurant, it was more, food was incidental to two billiard tables there. So are they in violation then, at this point?
Right now, no.
Because, you know, I spoke to the owner, and he can maybe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, his statement was that, yes, his main service was the billiards, and not the food service. So food service was incidental to those two billiard tables, which is allowed in the restaurant. Now, so, in that case, then how does, how do you interpret that, and how do you enforce the code there? Because, I don't know about other fellow commissioners, but my, you know, what I weigh in my decision making is that, you know, how does this, you know, play into, you know, the restaurant slash billiards, you know, what is incidental, what is not, and then, you know, what is allowed, what is, you know, the practices right now at this, you know, current facility is clearly is not a restaurant, is a billiard place, and we're allowing that, and then we're now adding two more tables. So I'm, so I'm taking a different angle at this thing, I'm looking at it differently right now. So, obviously, you haven't written them up for operating a billiards?
No, sir.
I think by definition, right now, they may just have a very unsuccessful restaurant. You know, that happens to have two billiard tables, so. In any of, you raised points for consideration.
Right.
Mr. Yousain, I believe you had some questions, or a question at least.
Two questions. The parking intensity that might come up because of the two additional billiards, how do you evaluate that, and how do you know how many more parking spaces are going to be required because of the two additional billiards?
We don't. It was, it was just an anticipated call.
More people.
That more, more tables will attract more people, more spaces.
Yeah, even though they're eliminating a couple of the tables, but I guess it's not being really used anyway. My other question is, the nightclubs, gyms, and community gardens under permitted uses, I guess they're based on getting a conditional use permit? Are those, is that it?
They're not by right, they're CUP, correct?
CUP.
The community garden is permitted, but the others need a CUP, that's right.
Nightclubs and gyms?
Yes.
Are there any nightclubs around there currently?
In that immediate stretch, I can't think of any.
And what would be a nightclub considered, like, place where?
A nightclub is a place that serves of, sometimes food, usually alcohol, and has a dance floor that's greater than 200 square feet.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. Sheets?
I'd like to continue on the parking aspect. It seems vague in the package about, I guess it just states generally that there may not be enough parking spaces. It seems to me, and I guess my question would be, when I was there, the parking lot was full, and there wasn't, I wasn't there a long time, it was lunchtime, there wasn't a lot of in and out traffic. It was full when I got there, it was full when I left. But I, in looking at these plans, I see such a large, if this is considered one building, it's a large building, obviously, and it shows, the plans at least show that a lot of the building is not in use. So if the parking lot's full today, what happens with the parking in future uses? And in fact, if they use it for what it's, as it's allowed to be used, would they have to get permits for additional parking? I guess I'm worried that the parking, there's a lot of parking now, will there be enough, and will they be, have to get a permit to get additional parking?
Staff also has the same concern regarding the current situation, based on staff's site visit. Again, the spaces were vacant, the tenants, neighboring tenant spaces were dominantly vacant, and we did observe a substantial amount of cars in there. One thing that the applicant is, is in compliance with, and is right, is that he is not changing the use over 2,000 square feet. He will not trigger any parking, new parking requirements. If he keeps his proposed tenant improvement under 2,000 square feet, he will still be allowed to maintain his 11 parking spaces.
Okay, so I guess another way to state that question, if that's the case, and they use all 11 parking spaces, will there be adequate parking for the rest of the building?
The planning wouldn't be able to enforce any type of parking reduction or any discretionary approval based on his particular square footage at, under 2,000 square feet.
Okay. Ms. Landerga?
This is a question for staff. Are there any other billiard halls or establishments in other IMU places? Are there any other presidents for it in the city?
I'm not aware of any in that area. The only billiards establishments I'm aware of is one on Brand Boulevard in the downtown area, and then this commission recently considered a billiard establishment on South Central.
That's right, the one on Central.
Yeah, and I guess I would note there that the commission, at that time, had some concerns, especially regarding the visibility of the location there, so. And I know you're trying to compare uses and coming up with what's, you know, a just and fair approach to the zoning in this area, but you, I would also urge you to consider the particular location in which this is being applied for.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff at this time? I'm sure we'll have another shot at him as the afternoon wears on. All right, at this point, we'll allow the applicant, or rather, the appellant, to state their case. You have up to 15 minutes. And as we mentioned before, Mr. Oatway, Mr. Banderian will also be part of your presentation in terms of his time and his ability to speak.
Good evening. My name's Nicholas Oatway, applicant for this particular case, 2010-015. And it's good to see you, Chairperson Kane and all the rest of the commissioners. We've been before you at another time, talking about billiards. And what we have here is, first of all, I'm going to read the findings of fact, just for the record, the way we described them in our application. First question in the findings of fact asks, how will the strict application of the provisions of this ordinance result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance? And we said, strict applications of the zoning ordinance handicap the legacy of the subject property by stopping him from having a truly successful business, providing a billiards place for his clientele. That answers part of the question related to, is it a billiards establishment we're asking for, or is it a restaurant for four tables? And it's really, as you can see, Mr. Lee, a billiards establishment which, for the convenience of the people there, there are sandwiches and cold sandwiches, I mean, you know, so it's a very, it's not really a restaurant in that regard. B, what exceptional circumstances or conditions apply to the property involved or to the intended use or development of the property, but do not apply generally to other property in the same zone or neighborhood? Our answer was, the exceptional circumstances involved in this proposed use are as follows. The applicant's customers are from a particular range of the population, mostly, say, 40 or 45 plus, and it's a group that gathers and doesn't, is really underserved in this particular neighborhood, and that can be shown by the number of people who have to wait in order to get to the two billiard tables that exist. C, why will granting of the variance not be detrimental to the public welfare? Well, one indication of that is that from our canvassing of the neighborhood and the notification of the neighborhood, there isn't one person who has come up, you know, opposition to this particular request. And as far as the people who are represented behind me, and I'll ask them to raise their hands, who are in support of what Albert's trying to do. Thanks. And so, granting of the proposal will not be detriment to the public welfare. In fact, I'm sure that you, as commissioners, are familiar with the seminal work by Jane Jacobs, talking about a much larger city, New York, but as neighborhoods, and the effect on safety of neighborhoods with mixed use. And the city of Glendale's trying to do that with the San Fernando corridor and with the whole idea of mixed use. We found early on in general plans that having everything divided just doesn't work, that mixed use really does create a safer city. D was, why will granting the variance be in keeping with the objectives of the ordinance? Granting this ordinance is in keeping, granting this variance is in keeping with a mixed-use district, and this ordinance, because it provides a recreational activity to an underserved group of people in a zone that is also used as a working environment. And you'll note that just in the street north of Broadway, and the two streets, there's a large amount of residential people who can access Broadway by walking. And, okay, let's see. That's my sort of reading of the findings of fact, not word for word, but with a little thrown in there. Do you have any specific questions regarding? I know that something was brought up in relation to the number of tables, the five tables versus the four, and really, what we're asking for is the two extra tables making four tables. The fifth table would have to be a whole different application, as far as my understanding, right? I mean, because it's talking about a different, an added amount of lease space. So what we're really talking about is the two extra tables making four tables, as shown in the, in the plan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions with me before Albert comes up and?
I imagine we do. Questions for the, please, Mr. Lee?
I think this question was addressed before regarding parking spaces. Let's say granting of this variance, use variance, and changing the use to billiards establishment may trigger a greater number of parking space that may be required for your establishment. Do you, did you give any thoughts to that, or you have any plans if that, you know, that is required?
In relation to parking, we seem to be, we seem to solve that situation, at least in relation to the parking requirements as they exist today, by keeping the space, the actual space that we're asking for, billiards establishment, under 2,000 square feet. That's, that's how we're dealing with it today, you know. We discussed at earlier times where we were talking about different areas that we might involve, or that we might even be over 2,000, we were talking, thinking of what other spaces might be available, either in the neighborhood or in adjoining properties where the use might be overlapped, but we, we didn't get into that because we kept everything under 2,000 feet.
And I just wanted to clarify that, so you are asking for use variance to convert existing restaurant, restaurant over to billiards establishment?
Yeah, if that's, if that's the way it has to be structured, I mean, if that, that's what we're asking for, yeah. I mean, because it's basically, in a restaurant, you have it written in your ordinance that a restaurant, if it's a restaurant, it only can have two, two tables. So as soon as we're asking for four tables, it seems to me that that changes the use. Does that make sense, then? To me, it makes it a billiards establishment, right?
No, I was just asking for clarification purposes.
That's my, at least, that's my sense of what it means. It does move from a restaurant to a billiards establishment.
Thank you. I have a question. Obviously, he's leasing the space from the property owner. Where is the property owner weighing in on this? We see nothing from him, we don't see that he's opposed, we don't see that he's in support. I mean, he's got, he's got a property that's problematic. He's got 11 parking spaces and 19,000 square feet, six, at least six lease spaces, it sounds like, and he only has one tenant right now. So he's probably happy that he has a tenant, but by the same token, he has a tenant that, with this type of use, promises to eat up a lot of parking. Now, he could craft it in terms of, you know, billiards are more popular at night, and everybody else is, you know, it's a daycare center for the other places, never mind whether that's an improved use in IM. But what's, what's the property owner saying about this? Is he even aware of this?
Oh, he's aware. When we met with him at the very beginning of this process, he didn't express a concern at that time, and in subsequent meetings and conversations, it didn't come up. Perhaps, I don't know, I can't really speculate why he didn't bring it up, but it wasn't a concern of his.
It's just, it puzzles me, frankly.
Okay.
You've got six, you know, you've got 11 spaces, you've got six lease spaces, 11 parking spaces, six lease spaces, 19,000 square feet, and, you know, I, I just, I just don't understand why the owner doesn't weigh in one way or another, that he's just quiet on this whole situation. We, no communication from the property owner?
No, sir.
Were confident they were noted, notified?
They're required, Mr. Chair, to sign the actual application.
They did.
And they did, okay.
Yeah, he knows exactly what it is that we've been applying for.
I'd like to add that, I mean, it comes back to my one point about parking. From what I saw, parking was full, and it stayed static for the 20 minutes I was there, or 30 minutes, I don't know how long it was, maybe not that long. But, so I don't currently know what the maximum, what the minimum is for parking spaces. It sounds like it's around 11, but to me, it's, we're creating a corner, we're putting yourself, putting this building in a corner. If it takes 11 to run a minimum for this establishment, there can be no other uses for the building. What if, what if the other spaces were leased? Where do you go? What do you do? I mean, I, I know this isn't your problem directly, but it is a problem for that building and for that location, that may or may not come back to us, and it's being, it's being added to or created.
Yeah, as far as the cars, Albert may be able to answer the cars, where they're coming from, if they're all for his establishment, or whether they're there for some other reason. You know, you might, you might find out. And as far as, I know that, I've been there at different times of day, and the use of the 11 spaces has varied greatly.
Okay.
You know, from one or two cars being there for a while, and then four or five, and then they go. That's what, that's what I experienced, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
We have the ability to impose conditions, you know, as we go through this. I just broached this because as we analyze it, we may, you know, walk down that path and find a few that are, that are practical. What's the current hours of operation of the facility?
Hour, the hours?
You know what, we're going to run into a problem here.
Oh, sorry.
Because you keep sitting there. So.
Okay.
Let me, let me interrupt that line of questioning, so to speak, for a moment. Let's have you say whatever you'd like to say as part of the presentation.
There you go. There you go.
And then we'll just kind of go into question and answers, and whoever's most appropriate to answer in your team can then answer it.
Okay.
So if you'd like to have your say, sir.
Thanks very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Albert Bandarian, and I started this business two years ago, two years ago, as a restaurant. And day by day, I saw a lot of success on this business. See people behind me, they're my, all my customers. I was in a pool table business 20 years, doing pool tables, restoring, recovering, doing business for pool halls, for the 18, 20, 20 pool tables. And I, I thought it's a good idea for me to start some kind of business, which is, I'm going to allow an IMU use, IMU zoning, two tables for my own customers, which I had To see this business as a growing business, as a small business, I don't see any, at least from my side, any problem to adding two more tables. I'm not asking for 10 tables. I'm not asking for 12 tables. There is no room. I don't have a space. If Mr. Lee can tell that, I don't have a room for more tables. And what I'm asking for, two tables. If that, if somebody wrote those codes under the restaurant, two tables allowed, they could write down four tables allowed under the restaurant, and it'd be fine. I'd be not going through all this. And as saying to changing from the restaurant to the billiard establishment, I will say, yeah, it's a billiard, it's going to call billiard establishment because the code said more than two tables, it's called billiard establishment. But I don't see any billiard establishment because I'm not going to have six tables, seven tables. I've worked, I've been in New Mexico five years, I lived over there, and I've worked in a pool hall, but the 18 tables, that's called billiard establishment. But what I'm asking, four tables, four tables for my customers. Because either way, if you find, gentlemen, ma'am, if you're going to prove it or not, they're going to come there, they're going to play, and they're going to sit over there with one hour, two hours, just get it, play. And I talked to Steve Davy, Lieutenant Steve Davy, and I explained to him the two things I don't want to do in this business. One is ABC license. I don't want to deal with the alcohol. I can sign it right now. I don't have a problem. And a second, American pool table, because it attracts a lot of kids and a lot of problems. What you see from my people, my customers, they're all over age, and they, they want to play, they want some place to have fun, and they know each other more than 20 years, more than 20 years. And they cannot go rent Americana, meet each other, and sit there two hours or one hour or talk about something else. They like to play. And what I'm, I'm asking, two tables, which I'm going to put a snooker and a billiard, Russian billiard. It's a six by 12 pool size pool table. It's huge. Mr. Lee saw it, Gabriel saw it, Mr. Gabriel, and it's huge, it's big. And compared to nine, nine feet, four and a half by nine, which is regular American pool table, these tables are huge, six by 12. So I, I cannot fit more tables there. Regarding the fifth table, we applied for five tables, just in case, if I can have, find room in that 1,500 square feet, or 1,600 square feet to fit that fifth table, maybe. But I don't think so because it's going to be very tight, very tight. Four tables, the four tables, the next to the door right now is a bar, is a countertop. As I told Mr. Lee, I'm going to took that countertop out completely. It's going to take a lot of work for me, just fit that fourth table over there. And I spent a lot of money on that countertop. But anyway, there is a lot of customer coming to my business. And regarding parking, I'm sorry, I want to wrap up this very fast so you can have more questions for me. Regarding the parking, daytime, I don't have a customers. From what, I open 12 o'clock, I don't have a customers until 3 o'clock, 2 o'clock. And most of the customer coming after 5 o'clock. And we have over there tenants, other tenants which they parking in that parking lot. Other, we have tenants over there. We have office spaces which is rented right now, not my site, the other building. They using their parkings, they using. And the customers, my customer, most of them come after 5 o'clock, which is offices are closed, everybody's closed, nobody's there anymore. So they using that parking. And plus, I read it, I know, I'm keeping under 2,000 square foot. If, if I, if I had, I had no parking, no parking space, I will get more room for more than 2,000 square foot, pull a more snooker or billiard table. But because of the parking issue, I'm keeping under 2,000 square foot, just, I think it's city codes, right? Under 2,000.
Making sure he's done first, Mr. Lee.
And believe me, I'm, I'm struggling, I'm struggling. Two years, I don't see my kids and my wife, two years, two, three hours, more than two, three hours, because I cannot survive not having more tables for customers to come to play. I cannot hire somebody. I cannot go home early. And my son, he cannot see me anymore. He said, Daddy, are you going to be home in this hour, this time? I can't. And I have to survive. And believe me, it's a very tough situation for me.
What are your hours?
For me?
What are your hours?
I'm, I'm open from 12 o'clock to midnight, little bit after midnight.
How many days a week?
Seven days a week, sir. If, if I had a good business, restaurant business, I will open five days a week. But I cannot, I mean, there is a very rough, rough, rough timing for me. Everything is falling apart. If, if you find people not going to prove this application, which I'm asking, I'd be, if I said I'm going to be end up on the street, that's, that's really true. It's not.
Yeah, you know, I'm kind of coming back to you with the same question, because your presentation sounds like, and your application sounds like, you know, you wanted to add, from your existing establishment, add two more tables.
Yes, sir.
Now, you already have zoning certificate for a restaurant use.
Yes, sir.
Which code allows you two tables.
Yes, sir.
Then if you want two more tables, that's a variance for adding two more tables.
Yes, sir.
But that's why I was asking you. Are you asking for, to change the use to billiards establishment, which the existing code does not allow you to do that? So I, that's why I needed a clarification from your, you know, I guess your consultant, and, and from you, yes.
Okay. If the, if the code said it's more than two tables, it's called billiard establishment, that's why we buy for variance. Because I, I cannot put more, I cannot just put two tables without doing anything, that not following the rules of city rules and not working with the city. If that is going to call from restaurant, to changing from restaurant to billiard establishment, let's call it. I mean, I don't know, I don't see any problem with that. Restaurant, I don't have that much customers, walking in customers, to just come sit, eat sandwiches. One, and then they, they call me, I deliver, that's it. But most of the time, my customers eat. They come, they go. They play and they eat. I mean, I don't know how I can change that, what's the, what's the meaning of two, two tables, changing four tables, billiard establishment? Yes, we did that because of city codes, because of the requirements. So if they're going to call as a billiard establishment, that's why.
So, and also, you're asking for two more, so not, not, not three more?
No, I, I'm asking two more.
Because in your application, it's.
We asked in application five, okay? But I don't see any fifth table, as you've been there, sir. I told you, I don't have room for five tables, because I have to keep under 2,000 square foot to not meet parking requirements. So it's a four tables, that's it. I don't, I'm not asking anything else.
Other questions?
Just one question.
Sure, Ms. Landrigan.
Albert?
Yes, ma'am.
May I call you that?
Sure.
Is it Menasian?
Bandarian.
Bandarian. Sorry, thank you. You, you have a restaurant, you have a permit for a restaurant right now, which allows people, if they wish, I guess, to bring in alcohol in a bag and drink. Is that correct?
I don't think so.
If they are, you cannot have, you can't bring a bottle into a restaurant and have a drink with your meal?
I don't think so.
Mr., Mr. Foy, Mr. Gersi, if you want to clarify that statement.
It's good to know, because I don't know about it.
We've been there.
It's very good to know.
We don't know that.
Yeah, we did.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, again, it goes back to that issue of, issue under the, the ABC rules, which is, and our own CP requirement for, that it be, what's regulated is the sale of alcohol, not sign as a consumption.
So if somebody did, that would not be breaking the law?
As far as I'm aware.
For a restaurant?
Correct.
But for a billiards hall, that would be totally different, or anywhere?
I think anywhere. The ABC, as far as I know, doesn't regulate, you know, just consumption only.
So you can bring in a bottle of wine to Jiffy Loop?
[laughing]. I'm just driving out.
As long as you're not, all right. I'm just thinking, you know.
I knew it is not allowed, but I said, maybe I'm wrong. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to apply.
All right, well, that was the question I had, is, do, have you ever had your customers bring in their bottles?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thought I'd ask.
But now that they know, they call.
You're like, yeah! Thank you for that information.
There were a lot of smiles in the audience.
Stick with two tables.
It's one more thing, I'm sorry, to mention, is this zoning, because I, I went to a city code computers in the city of Glendale. I checked it out, I look at it, everything. It's very, very weird. In this zoning, allowed tavern, I mean, bar, you can bring a lot of problems to the area. And it's not allowed billiard establishment. I mean, billiard establishment, everybody listening, billiard establishment, they think it's going to be fight, it's going to be drinking, it's going to be police activity. But in two, two years, I didn't have any police activity, I don't, I don't have anything. I mean, no neighborhood service, no nothing. And every day, I'm trying to make that place more, look more nicer, and more cleaner, and more healthier for my customers. That's all. I mean, restaurant, it's allowed bar, it's allowed private, private clubs, it's allowed tavern, but it's not allowed billiard establishment. Very weird.
I'm actually, I'm actually struck by the fact that you came in and asked to add two, as opposed to somebody finding out that you already had four in. I mean, this, I'm just stunned that somebody is following the rules. It's, it's such a relief for us.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know how to react to this. This has never happened before. The, when you brought this up to the, to the building owner, I mean, how did he react to the idea of, okay, I've got, I've got my tenant right now, he's going to be adding some billiard tables? How did he react to what's going on with his parking? He must have been talking about it a little.
He doesn't, he doesn't have a problem with the, for me to put, to add two more billiard tables, because he's going to raise every year the rent, so he doesn't care. But as far as the parking, because of, we met under 2,000 square foot, and we, I will, I talked to him about the parking issue. Right now, I'm using one side. There is a two-side parking, if you look at it on a map. I'm using one side of parking, if I have a customers. The other side, they using for the offices. But after 5 o'clock, after 5 o'clock, it's all parking, it's for me. It's nobody, I mean, my customers can, can come and park. And I don't know to mention or not, but there is a plenty of parkings on a Broadway. Also, there is a building next to me, which I, I talked to him, I asked about parking, parking, to get the parking. Is it, is it a film production company, which nobody parks there anymore? We didn't come, we disagreed because of the insurance problem, insurance type of thing. He had to insure his customers films and his production company. But his parking is empty. Maybe, maybe I will talk to him later on. Still, I'm under 2,000, but I'm trying to make it work for city. I'm trying to make it work for city. And maybe I will talk to him and get just his parking space insured for my insurance to make sure nothing going to happen to his, his company. So that's another, another idea I'm, I'm trying to solve.
Other questions for the speaker at this time? All right. You will have a rebuttal period later, where you have up to 15 minutes to address anything else that might come up, either with public comment or additional comments from staff or anything we might bring up. So thank you for now.
Thank you, sir.
We'll hear from you again shortly. Further observations, comments from staff, reaction to anything the appellant has stated so far?
Staff has no comment. Excuse me.
If I may clarify a little bit about this question about 2,000 square feet, the number of tables and all of that. We have a billiard, if he changes from a restaurant to a billiards establishment, there's no limit on the number of tables. So I, right now, he, the establishment is allowed to be a restaurant, having counter service, which is limited to eight seats. And I understand that maybe that he meant if he increases the number, maybe he understood if he increased the number of restaurant tables, it might put him over the eight seats, and that would be a problem from a parking standpoint, perhaps. And in addition, the 2,000 square foot rule is, the 2,000 square foot limit is something under which you can interchange uses without providing additional parking. It gives some freedom to change of use within small tenant spaces. And if he goes, if the space is increased above 2,000 square feet, then stricter restaurant parking requirements would kick in, which would not be the case if it was a billiards establishment. There would not be additional parking spaces kicking in then, I believe.
Let's start with Mr. Lee.
I have a question, because I think the Albert owner also mentioned this too. So any restaurant, not only this restaurant, but other restaurants, our code says, you know, you could have up to two tables. So as an asset, number two goes over two. So let's say if you have three tables, and they are, it's a, it's a for-service restaurant, now their usage becomes billiards?
Right, they're no longer considered a restaurant.
No longer considered a restaurant.
That's right.
Just to.
They're allowed to serve food if they'd like, but.
So I need to clarify, Mr. Foy, that are you saying that if, if in fact, this billiards was allowed, you could have as many billiard tables as you want, as much floor area space as you want, and there would not be a limit, there would not be a parking requirement?
My.
Doesn't go over two.
I, I just don't know the history of what was the use before this restaurant. Do you know what was your, the previous tenant?
I was a food manufacturer.
Okay, that, he may, okay, then let me, let me qualify what I just said. If, if indeed he was, this restaurant was allowed to go in because it was under 2,000 square feet, once you're over 2,000 square feet, you can no longer take advantage of the easy change of use. And you would have to then provide parking in the increment to the previously allowed use. to the previously allowed use. This is getting really complicated. I'm sorry, it's hard to express verbally.
Let me complicate it even more. I seem to be the only one on this, on this vein, but as was stated by the business owner, now, now there is a parking requirement in another part of the building, which now means there aren't as many spaces available for the billiard use at, at times. Is, what, is, I don't even know how to ask the question. Seems to me that the game's changed. I'm, I'm, I just need, I want to know, relative to what we do or don't do, what is the requirement? Where does he stand? Where does the, the rest of the, where do the rest of the tenants stand? What are the requirements for the whole, the whole building?
Yeah, I, I don't know all the uses in the building and their square footage, which is what I would need to know, to answer that question fully. If he's, if, if the previous use was manufacturing, and he's, and this more intense restaurant use was allowed in, under the 2,000 square foot rule, even if it were, even if originally he had become a billiards establishment instead of a restaurant, he would have had that flexibility under 2,000 square feet. Since the original change was from the very low parking requirement manufacturing use, if he goes over 2,000 square feet, he'd have a little bit of a problem being more than 2,000 square feet as a billiards establishment. He'd have a much bigger problem being more than 2,000 square feet as a restaurant use.
Okay. Clear, Mr. Foy.
And all that said, we can condition the use to four tables.
Right.
As an aside.
And we can condition the parking requirements? Or can we not?
Not sure what we'd do with that, but we can continue when, when we get into discussion. I'm sorry, staff, anything else?
No, not at this moment, sir.
Other questions for staff at this time?
That's clear.
Okay. All right. At that point, I'll go to the public. We only have one speaker card. It's from Mr. Galani.
Good evening. My name is Ramin Galani, and I'm a member, member of this establishment since two years ago. And the reason we all are here today, because this is such a good community, and such a very nice establishment, clean and free of alcohol, and, you know, all these problems. I live 25 miles away from here, and I come here every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And as a matter of fact, I bring my kids also. I feel so comfortable, because I know all these communities, all these people for past seven years, seven, eight years. Because we used to go to different club, and they closed it, and they move it, moved it to a little bit further, which is right across the street from the police station. And the area is not actually good for us, and we feel much comfortable, you know, playing here. So we are asking for two more table. Most of the time, we're coming, waiting time is about one, one and a half hour for playing for half an hour, 45 minutes maximum. And we've been asking Mr. Robert, Albert, for past two years, when are we gonna have more tables? So, because snooker table is like, maybe two or three places throughout the LA County. So we are asking you, please give us another two extra table, so we all can just seeing each other here more often, and because this is very nice environment, and very good community. And we are begging you. Basically, this is, this is not a restaurant, this is a cold cut, I own a business. And this is a cold cut sandwiches and juice bar, mostly. And there isn't any hot food, we've never seen any hot food. Maybe we use microwave down here, as like, I own Subway, I just, you know, know the operation, how does it go? So if we have two more tables, we must, we want to come here more often. Most of these guys probably been there for five years, five days or six days a week. And because of lack of table, we all have to wait long time to just, you know, get the table. And this is just only two tables. We're begging for these two.
Questions for the speaker?
How much does it cost to play?
It's about $12 an hour.
Why are there no women? Do, I should come there, you guys are.
Yeah, there is some, sometimes. There is actually some women, they just come and play, and.
Do you know how to play Russian?
I'm pretty good.
She'd be willing to learn.
But it's actually a challenging table, and it's not like, easy to, you know, we like to have more and more.
Ladies night, is that what you're proposing?
Not green.
We never had any parking problems since two years.
Besides, besides the snooker, you're finding yourself playing dominoes, or backgammon, or anything?
No, I always play either snooker or pyramid. So these two tables are very popular among our community.
Other guys, are they playing board games, or?
No.
Cards?
No.
Nothing but, nothing but sticks?
Just, just a stick. And the, the restaurant you mentioned, actually, it's all juice bar. It's soft drinks, and this is the beauty of it. There is no alcohol in it, so everybody's are, you know, having a good time.
I think, I think that's it. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Rebuttal time. You have up to 15 minutes to address questions, anything that's been brought up. And you have, this is your time to, for lack of a better phrase, closing remarks.
Well, I think the, I'm interested to find out what, what concerns come up for you as commissioners, and how you think conditioning and approval would appear, what that would look like, obviously. We're, my, that's really my only question of you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll telegraph that if in our discussions, that becomes a conversation where we're starting to think about conditions and things like that, then it would be my inclination probably to open the public hearing briefly, just to get some insight from you. So just in terms of process, we can't really, nothing's really been brought up yet.
I understand.
If it is, then we'll potentially, you know, bring you back into the conversation.
Okay. That sounds good. That's all I have.
Okay.
I was mentioning, I was trying to show you these pictures, because Mr. Lee saw he was there, and I wanted to see.
We're gonna, we're gonna take those and keep them. Okay, just make sure you understand the rules.
I have.
All right. I'll set that one that way, that one that way, and we'll let them pass.
And I had a lot, I had a lot of people, you know, just signing and their names, and, you know, to support, but most of them, they, they couldn't show up. That's all I can say. I just want to make sure whatever I said is right and true, and my people.
Well, you cleaned these people up pretty well for this picture, didn't you?
Oh, they, if you see down the picture, you, you can imagine what.
Profies.
Can picture it.
Do we have any last questions at this time for the speaker?
None.
Okay, unless there's something you want to add that hasn't already been said.
I think I told you whatever I had to tell me, tell you from my heart, and I hope you find people gonna approve the application, and let me exit in my business, not going down the street, going up, and work with the city. And I said, again, I'm not gonna apply for any ABC license, I don't want it. I'm not gonna pull any eight-foot pool table, nine-foot pool table.
Are you doing?
That's all my concern. So I want you to know that. No ABC, no pool table.
Thank you.
Just snooker and billiards.
I have one more question. Is it $12 per person, or $12 per table?
No, $12 per hour.
For the table?
For the table, but there is a, if they play four, four people, which is, lately, it was good for me, because I don't have a table.
Yeah.
They play four by four, it's a $14.
Ooh.
It's not, it's not. In San Gabriel, they have similar tables. It's $18 an hour, $25 an hour. Mine is much cheaper, but they like to come. They want to be there next to me, and I, they know me more than 20 years.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Unless I see anything from staff, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we'll enter deliberation.
No comments, sir.
All right. Entering deliberation, who'd like to lead off? Ms. Landrigan?
I have a couple of questions. Get you to it.
Wait, how can you have questions? We just closed.
One is, is a billiard hall not permitted?
We're reopening a public hearing.
Well, because, I thought I heard you say it is not permitted. It's a non-permitted.
That's right, that's correct, that's why they need a use variant.
I am using, yes.
In this zone.
It's in a C P, this is a use variant.
It's a use variant, so.
Yes, that's why they need a.
And it only, so the only last question is, it goes not with the property, but with, with this establishment, the business?
I think it probably depends on how you condition it, but generally speaking, the aroma of the land.
And lastly, before you open it back up, incidental seating and the fire code, in a billiard hall, is there an incidental seating requirement?
Not sure what that is, and I, I don't know the answer.
Well, meaning, how many people can you put in this space? Do you have seat requirements outside of the billiard halls? Are there tables? Since it's no longer a restaurant, are there other accommodating elements?
There certainly would be fire code requirements, and the fire department would set the number based on the square footage, and maybe Gabriel knows the number.
I do.
Okay.
I, I can take a small shot at this, is that the applicant, if the applicant is approved, they will have to reapply for a zoning use certificate. At that time, building and safety and zoning will sign off on that zoning use certificate. Fire occupancy is typically not questioned for a zoning use certificate. If the applicant does a tenant improvement, yes, a, a, a fire review will be needed. My observation, when I was there, had maximum occupancy 30. So I don't know what, where that number came from, in the premise.
Established somewhere.
That would be established by.
You know?
Fire.
Come, come on up and just tell us where the 30 came from.
I researched this all, because each table, each pool table allowed eight people. They're counting as eight people playing on a pool table. Two pool tables is 16. Eight seat, eight chairs, which is eight people. Four tables, eight chairs, so that's 26. And they, I think they turned that to 16, eight, that's 24. And I think six people, they pull six, six people extra, like 30 people. That's, that's all I know.
So then obviously, if we have four tables, and.
Yeah, four tables, 32, 32.
Would that trigger a problem?
Well, that's where.
Which, I'm gonna take the restaurant seats out. I'm, I'm not gonna have restaurants in there. I'm not gonna have a restaurant table there.
Well, you're, again, the, the, between the building department and the fire department, at some point, they establish what the maximum capacity would be.
That's correct, unfortunately.
I had before 48 seats, capacity, 48, 48 people capacity. Because of the, I couldn't, it was a tough time for me to pay the Los Angeles sewer system fee, or more table. I'm telling you, this is, I mean, it's unbelievable. Yeah, I couldn't pay $9,000 sewer system fee, just paying, and that money goes away. You cannot, there is no return. So that's why I brought my chairs to the 10, eight, so I could have, I could pay like $20,000, I could afford to pay $20,000. That's, that's how, it's my, in, in my original plans, which I applied two years ago, it was 48, like eight, eight table, 16 people sitting, anyway, I don't remember. But that's the reason I brought two, eight.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for indulging.
Oh, and I suspect we will indulge someone else, if not me, again. Anything else for questions that?
Yeah, I have one.
Very good.
Mr. Foy, I, you mentioned earlier that you weren't around when the, actually, ordinance or the project area was written up. But what's exactly the reasoning behind, you know, that a nightclub is allowed in that area, but a billiard wouldn't be allowed? What's the reasoning behind not allowing a billiard to get a conditional use permit?
Well, I mean, again, you're kind of asking the same question.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I don't think I got a satisfactory answer as.
Yeah, I, I mean, in any list of uses in a zone, I think people take into account the nature of, what they envision for the zone, and which uses they believe to be most appropriate, and which they, they believe should, are better steered towards other zones, as do overall with this economic development strategy. They may want to put certain, concentrate entertainment uses in one area versus another. I, I honestly, I don't know how to answer why a nightclub and not an arcade establishment. I mean, if you're suggesting that they tend to have somewhat similar operating characteristics, I'd probably agree.
I mean, I, I was wondering if it's maybe because they just didn't think of a billiard or not, or if there was really a reason behind not having a billiard or not, but I guess there really isn't.
It must have been intentional. I mean, I, I don't think that it's not. The billiards establishment existed as a use at that time in the code. I'm sure it was considered, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to repeat the thought process that happened then.
Yeah. Good.
Any other questions? Again, we'll reopen at a moment's notice.
I did ask Gabriel to bring us the map showing the boundaries of the San Fernando corridor, so that we can see where this establishment is in relationship to it.
Very good. Well, in the meantime, we'll reclose the hearing, we'll continue deliberations, we'll reopen when he comes back, and so on. Where were we? I think we started with you, and you started with questions, so please continue.
All right, I'm, well, my thought is that it certainly seems to meet an entertainment need within the community, and I, unfortunately, it's in this area, but, you know, I've been to the, you know, Moonlight Roller Derby area, and, and I.
Rollerway.
Rollerway.
It's not roller derby.
You don't know my name, and I skate. But in, back to a serious element here, goes all the way up there. One of the issues is, you know, what is a good mix? And often, billiards are associated with alcohol, and this doesn't seem to be, and it seems to not be, we can be certainly conditioned there, that I could see that it meets a neighborhood intent as opposed to not. I mean, it's a, it's a difficult one for me, because I, I totally agree with the findings that staff has come up with, and I, you know, being the variance findings, I have a very hard time, if they aren't there, making it. So, I mean, it's a difficult decision for me.
Really?
Yeah, I will go. When I was there, I looked at the surrounding area, and as is right now, you know, having billiard there, it seems to blend in. And billiard, in my opinion, is, it's almost like a sport, too. I, you know, it is a, it is a good entertainment, you know, for people to, to go there and relax, to have fun. But the, on, on the other side, is that, I guess, our leaders before us.
It's right here.
When they made this into redevelopment area, they had certain thoughts, and they wanted to truly develop this area. wanted to truly develop this area into, you know, with a certain purpose, you know, and certain goal. And obviously, you know, that's why they specified this one particular, I mean, they spelled out billiards, you know, and, you know, not to be in this, in this area. So that's why I was, you know, in the beginning, trying to look for some sort of a way loophole, you know, in the code somewhere, that allows additional cables using the variance. But, you know, this is where I, you know, I'm still running into same, same difficulty like Commissioner Landrigan, that, you know, the code does not allow it. But when I went to the site, when I went to the neighbor, neighbors, neighborhood, and looking at the, the, you know, the game itself, the entertainment itself, you know, I want to grant it. You know, this is, this is a good thing to do. You know, it's helpful, I think, you know, for the residents there. So, just like Commissioner Landrigan, I'm torn between, I know what the code says, but I know, you know, I don't think this, this billiards will really attract all the negative, you know, environment, you know, with the, you know, establishment here. So, I guess I'm leaning towards granting the requests with conditions, you know, that will make sure that it stays clean, stays, you know, and make them honest, and becomes a really entertainment establishment.
Have you worked through some, please, have you worked through some of those conditions beyond that?
That.
Chicken in every pot type of.
That's the part that I was struggling through.
Well, we still have time. You know, everybody has more than one opportunity to weigh in. Thanks for your initial comments, Mr. Lee.
Okay.
Very good.
Sometimes when I look at these variance cases and then see the code, how it's sometimes not completely entirely makes sense, especially for something like this, where we have a maximum of two billiard places allowed, but we can't have more than that, and if we have more than that, it's considered a billiard place, and it's, and billiards aren't allowed in this place, in this area, but you allow a nightclub in there. And what I like to look at is the reasoning behind things like that, and why a billard isn't allowed in an area like that. Obviously, and that's the reason why I kept asking Mr. Foy what the reasoning really behind that is. And I think, based on some of the conversations previous commissioners had, and what I assume is that, you know, billiard activities bring about not so, for lack of a better word, good people or alcohol usage that normally comes with the billiard location. Obviously, I don't think this is the type of activity that's happening here, and the clientele does seem to be different, and a much older crowd, and they're coming for a specific type of billard that's not available in other locations, mostly in Glendale. So I don't think, I don't think it's very unreasonable to ask for two more billiards to be added into this type of restaurant, into this type of use. I don't think that's reasonable at all, unreasonable at all. I would think it's kind of hard to meet the condition number one. I mean, other than the financial difficulties that they might have, the practical difficulties, finding the, finding for that, I'm having trouble for that, but I could probably find something. I mean, I don't think this is very unreasonable to add two additional billiards to this location.
Thank you, Mr. Usain. Sheets?
Okay.
You just saw spoken.
Oh, you're probably front.
There you go.
Okay, I'm going to repeat myself. So, and I think that's important as to why we're here, that we need to take, we need to look at the big picture. We need to think about what the intent is, but we can't willy-nilly just change the codes without knowing the intent. But having said that, I think it's very refreshing that you're following the process. I think it's very refreshing that the business owner put a lot of thought, did a lot of research, had a lot of, got some professional help. I'm pleased to see people that use the billiard hall showing up here, caring enough to take their time and be here, and they all seem very sincere. The owner seems to be very sincere. It's always difficult when, you know, when I try to picture, put the whole picture together, but instead of getting too wordy, I have concerns. Whether we call it a restaurant with pool tables or a billiard establishment, I think that's irrelevant at this point. I think it's a business that is trying to be successful. I think it's a business that has, has clientele that want to support it. And I think with certain conditions, I can be convinced that we should allow this establishment to add two more tables. I do have concerns about parking. I seem to be the only one harping on that one, but for the future, which is what we try to look at, business could pick up, the building could be leased out, but I guess that's an issue we deal with when that time comes. So for the, for the issue at hand, I think I could see my way into supporting, supporting this, this use.
Okay. Well, for my part, I'm just going to echo it as well. I think our biggest difficulty is going to be drafting.
Conditions.
Working through the conditions, because there are difficulties with that. This area was zoned industrial. It was zoned for a reason, that, you know, that that's an important use in our city. We need to maintain a certain stock of that. Now, just because we zone it doesn't mean we'll get industrial uses, so we have to kind of recognize, you know, what's, what's relevant and appropriate. There's a big part of me, I echo, I think, what Mr. Usain might have said, just in terms of why can things like nightclubs be permitted in industrial use, but not something that can be regulated and be more innocuous than something like a billiard hall. I look at the specific property, I look at the specific area, I look at the specific use. I do worry about, not so much this particular thing morphing, but I do worry about what happens if it's sold, what happens if the clientele changes out, you know, what are we opening the door for in terms of, you know, it becoming something that it isn't today? And by granting the use variants, are we, are we creating that potential? And frankly, we are, but.
Can we condition it to stay with the one?
Oh, we can try to work through some conditions to try to control that. I actually think that the appellant is, is going to be hampered by his own success. You're going to get four tables, and you're not going to be able to do much more with it, and you're going to have to find yourself a better property in a better zone, you know, where you've got some square footage, and, you know, God bless if that's your situation. You know, we could all have bigger problems than success. So I'm, you know, other than, you know, echoing pretty much all the remarks that have been said, the parking's an issue, I would say that, that if the rest of the property maintains the industrial aspect, it's more than likely going to be, the billiard use is going to be more off-peak, but then again, who knows what's going to try to morph into the other, the other locations. It's going to be, you know, a mess at some point, but it's also kind of an existing mess. And if you're going to have a mess in an industrial location, that's not a bad place to do it, just because of, you know, the, well, by that, I mean, the use pattern, you know, if you're, if you're doing something at night versus the day. So again, I think our biggest problem is just going to be working through findings of fact and overruling or modifying the thought process that staff had originally gone into. I'm going to suggest a couple of things. I'm going to suggest that we talk a little bit about conditions. I'm going to suggest we talk a little bit about the findings. My guess is that unless we work our way through it, we're going to have to invite staff on the basis of what they've heard, and on the basis of the new evidence presented in this de novo hearing, that staff may need to come at this with a little different attitude and look at it at a little different way, based on the things they've heard today. So that said, let's talk conditions, let's talk the findings and so on. Mr. Lee?
Yeah, can I give a try on that, maybe, findings, A, B, C, D?
Of course, please.
And see if.
Maybe we can get there without having to remand.
Yeah, you know what, because I'm looking at.
Or continuing.
Analysis of a use variants request by the staff, in their own words, you know, obviously, we know what the zone says, and as Mr. Chair you said, but the, if the sentence says, the intent of the IMU zone is to allow and attract industrial and commercial activities that provide a range of goods and services to the community. I look at this as a service to the community, this, you know, the billiard establishment, and it's a commercial activity. And also, the second sentence says a variety of commercial uses are allowed in this zone. So although it was a specific about the billiards, but, you know, our own, I guess, interpretation of this, you know, qualifying under the, you know, the commercial uses, commercial services, you know, might, you know, satisfy the intent. The second part, which, whereas, you know, what type of, I guess, uniqueness does this have, bring, you know, to, you know, bring this? And the fact that, you know, that there is no, no billiards, you know, in the vicinity nearby, that this service to the community is unique itself. And, you know, obviously, C and D, then we can justify those using a similar argument. I mean, that's, that's my crack at it.
Up ahead. Conditions, of course, four tables, I'm guessing.
Right, four tables, and then, as you said, maybe, you know, tie it to the owner, or I don't know if you want to tie the operating hours to that, no alcohol, you know, that the owner says he doesn't want it, so we'll just make them honest, and then make all that part of the conditions.
Other comments? Other, especially in relates to conditions and findings?
I don't know if this would amount to that, but.
You're not leaning to the button, are you?
God, I hope not. There will be, I think the, among the contention on this in the future could be a billiard hall versus a pool hall, which is very significant. I don't know if you want to open that can right now, but I think back to the fact that it specifically stated billiard hall, billiard, I don't even know what it said, billiard establishment, I think. But maybe I don't need to bring that into here right now.
Getting to become the music man.
Yeah. No, I don't have anything to add right now, because he covered all the conditions I had in mind. I agree with the three tables.
Four tables.
Four, total of four. And can I bring alcohol? I guess the reason I brought that, my last point up that I didn't address very well is, I think it's important that we specify that it's billiard tables, which is a significantly different establishment than if there were bar-type pool tables where they, you put the money in, that's a whole different animal. And I think that's, that's a significant difference in the type of establishment that this is.
I think that's fair, that we could actually condition the type of table. Ms. Landrigan?
I would like to open the public hearing and ask a question of staff.
What hearing's open? For the purposes of asking a question of staff?
At one of our other hearings, there was, there were conditions that seemed to have no strength to them in that, and I'm thinking specifically, that had been in a previous use variance, and so there was no way to actually enforce them. So my question on this is, in this variance, if we provide conditions and they aren't met, what would, what is the remedy to them not being adhered to?
Commissioner Landrigan, there's a couple of remedies in the code now. One is obviously, violation of the condition means that the use variants can be either suspended or revoked by, I guess it would be the planning commission, I think those come back to the planning commission, too. In addition, actually, now, a violation of a condition and a discretionary entitlement is actually a violation of the code itself, so that can be treated by, as any other violations of the code are treated, such as traditional code enforcement, or even nuisance abatement type of activity. So there is a range of remedies for violation. Usually, the, probably the most effective, depending on the type of condition, is sort of administrative enforcement, getting the owner and the applicant and putting them on notice that this is violation. If they're, if they don't correct it, then it'll be brought back for consideration of either suspension or revocation, depending on the type of violation, the severity of the violation.
Thank you.
Continuing to close the public hearing, continuing deliberations.
We had the one thought about, I don't know if we finished the thought, about having the conditions carry with this business, this establishment or this business versus going with the property? Is there something?
I don't think we can condition that. I think we can't limit it to the business, sure. Ms. Landrigan, your thoughts on the conditions, anything you wanted to add, or you could enhance as it relates to Mr. Lee's thoughts on the findings? Just to put you on the spot.
I've been thinking about it. Well, the strict application of provisions don't address snooker halls. There are other kinds of tables that are in use here, so they are specifically related to what is a typical billiard hall, which has far more tables and, you know, a larger square footage. I would think that we could maybe put that in there, and that would be, you know.
Limited square footage.
Limited square footage, different kinds of tables, different type of clientele.
That'll have to strengthen the language a little bit.
Would you want to condition a ladies' night?
No, I don't think that. I might come in.
Because we can reopen and ask if you.
Play a game or two.
It'd be a tournament.
Wednesday is ladies' night already.
Right.
See, they know we have.
I don't know what. Services become a police suggestion. Okay, I've got that. Mr. Foy shared with me that there was, there was some potential language from the police department.
Yes.
Where they also suggested a condition that no other games would be allowed to be played, including card, dice, or any other games of chance or otherwise. No Monopoly, no Yahtzee, no. And then, applicant shall ensure strict adherence to the smoking ordinance of the business. Anything else to add? Do we want to take a run at formalizing the motion? I don't hear enough. I don't hear anything to add, I'm sorry, staff, do. Would you like me to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of seconds to add on, I did find a memo from the police department, if, if this variance was approved, a list of conditions, and there's a total of five conditions.
Would, would you read them into the record, please?
I will. The only form of entertainment allowed is a snooker-type table games. No other table games of any kind be permitted in the facility, including smaller pool tables. Second condition, no live entertainment allowed. Third condition, no other games allowed to be played, including cards, dice, or any other game of chance. Fourth condition, he ensures strict adherence to the smoking ordinance at the business. And the fifth condition, he is required to close by 2:00 a.m.
Yeah, because right now, the only hours of operation was, we haven't set any hours of operations.
That's correct, sir. Thank you.
I, I would, um, public hearing closed, thank you. Oh, you have a question?
Eric, did you have any conditions that you wanted to add? I didn't hear any, so...
No, I'm okay with what's been said.
Okay, it's fine.
I, I would limit the hour of operations as far as being open to 2:00 a.m. to Friday or Saturday only.
For...
Till two, on weekends, I suppose.
On Friday and Saturdays?
So weekdays are twelve.
Friday and Saturday only.
So weekdays can be midnight?
Midnight.
Twelve.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia?
Just, uh...
Public hearing open.
Mr. Chair, just, when you have chance, two additional conditions, I think, that you might want to consider. One is just a standard, comply with all laws and requirements, including the Glendale Municipal Code, and then two, perhaps comply with the floor plan that was presented as part of the application.
Excellent.
Very good. Earning your keep for us this evening, thank you very much. Can we, it's getting a little complicated for wordsmithing, can we just reference that as we're making our motion and findings?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Anyone else?
Developing carpal tunnel this evening. So who'd like to take a run at the motion?
Did we have a parking condition in there?
I don't know.
But that was under 2,000, so that, that was not running.
I don't know what we can craft on that. What are your thoughts? What are you trying to...
I, I didn't hear one, I was just, I, I think, I don't see the parking being a problem in the evening, I think it's their off-hour, different uses, but I don't know. So it just was a question.
I, I...
Do you want to take a...
Are you asking something?
Yes. Do, would you like us to read what we've heard so far as far as conditions of approval, just to clarify, we haven't missed anything?
And, and findings.
And findings.
Yes.
As far as the conditions of approval, we're looking at the applicant shall comply with buildings and other codes. The applicant is permitted to operate a billiard establishment with a maximum of four billiard tables, not pool tables, in substantial performance with the plan submitted. No alcohol sales, consumption, service shall be permitted in the billiard hall, or the billiard establishment without approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant shall maintain the premise landscaping in a parking lot in good condition and free of weeds and graffiti. The conditions of approval include all conditions mentioned in the police memorandum dated, and then whatever the date would be...
September 23rd, 2000.
For 23rd. That's what I have down.
Except for the hours.
And the, well, that included hours up to 2:00 a.m., so what I'm hearing now is...
Clarify the Friday, Saturday only.
Friday, Saturday only.
All other days would to midnight.
All other days to midnight, okay.
My, my question to my other commissioners is, lighting was an issue at the other billiards establishment that we had here. Do we want to make sure that sufficient lighting is provided in the parking lot?
I don't think, that's open, thank you. We were sidebar-ing, but you were basically broaching the idea about lighting.
Yeah.
Adequate lighting.
For the safety.
I think we should indicate that the parking lot shall maintain adequate lighting at all time, and I don't know what, what that other lighting requirement was, but that all lights, but I think that's not a bad idea to add that in there.
Okay, since the public hearing's open, I do want to, not that it may change what we're doing, but it's always nice to hear what the appellant feels, would you step up and just weigh in a second? You've heard the conditions, and I'd just like to see if you have anything to say about them, so just approach the mic. Any, any difficulties with anything you've heard?
The only thing that came up was the timeframe, the hours of operation. I think Albert has something to say about that.
Well, that's fine, come on up, let's, let's hear about it. Again, you testified your 12 to 12 right now.
Yeah, 12 to 12 now, because I have...
And you haven't seen your wife and kids, which I thought was a complaint.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, but because of, because of the people are, they're going to come more often, because I'm going to have more table, as the police department, Steve Davy, I talked to him, I said, I don't want to open after 12. I cannot, I mean, it's going to be very hard, believe me, to kick people out 12 o'clock. They, they, they love that game, and they're trying to play. So any condition you put, I don't mind, I will meet with your conditions, I will go with it, but only the timeframe, please, if it's possible, seven days a week, 12 to two, two o'clock, 2:00 a.m.
I mean, we'll, we'll talk about it, we hear what you're saying.
There's something...
You're already, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll consider what you're saying.
I don't want to, I don't want to violate codes, that's all I, I'm asking.
And again, your wife and kid are going to hear the testimony.
I know, but I can't, I can't, I can't hire somebody going home 6:00 afternoon, be with the wife and kid.
I suppose the wife could always work while you go home, but all right. We, we won't manage your business that way, sir. All right, we're going to...
She's a good person.
Anything else on conditions? You had any qualms?
No, no, I, I don't mind, any conditions, just the timeframe.
All right, thank you, we'll reclose public hearing. We've heard input from the appellant, the, does anybody have any evolution of thought or, or anything on hours of operation from what we've heard?
I don't see a problem doing it seven days till two, because it's not really a residential area, so I don't see who it would be affecting during the weekday, but I want to, I am kind of concerned, if there are complaints, what would happen, and could it be, could it be brought up or could it be revoked if there is an issue later on?
The noise ordinance has to be applied with, because it says that you, they will apply with all applicable codes. I think that's what we added in there.
So there is a possibility, if there is, if this is, this does become an issue, then it could be potentially revoked, right?
I have the same concern issue. I mean, I could see having it open till two on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but...
At that point, why is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday so unique? I mean, you know...
Why seven days, you know?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does use variance have time limit, like CUPs?
It doesn't have, it doesn't have a, like, a three or five year...
No, it doesn't. Can I, then maybe, uh...
That's where a CUP can come in.
Right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, I've opened the public hearing, in case you want to say something.
I just wanted to address Mr. Science's question about sort of revocation if there's an issue with the noise, and when, when you don't have a condition, when it's just complying with the code and not being a nuisance, the standard's a little bit higher, you have to show that it's, it's an ongoing nuisance. It can't be, those nuisance activities can't be mitigated some other way before you can actually revoke it, so it's a high standard. Once you grant it, there's sort of, and they start operating under it, there's a certain vested right to do that, and you have to show either violation of explicit condition or nuisance activity that can't be fixed some other way. I just wanted to let you know, it's not simply they violate the, or noise ordinance once, they're going to be back here on a revocation, it's a much higher standard.
And is that a problem?
Pardon me?
And do you see that as a problem?
No, not as a problem, I just wanted to let the commission know, it's not, you know, violation of the...
Unless it is a stated condition, you're saying that...
Right.
That standard is a standard that has to accumulate.
Correct, correct. So if there's a, you know, if there's a violation of the hours of operation, you'd have to show it happened more than a couple of times, you know, or it has to be something that's ongoing.
Or noise, I mean, it would have to be, what, max, 10 times a year, is that enough?
It's, it's hard to say, it's, I can't put a number on it. It'd have to be something that's generating a lot, generating a lot of complaints from neighbors and, and our, our staff and that sort of thing.
I don't have any problems with the 2:00 a.m.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't have any issues with the 2:00 a.m.
Yeah, and I'm willing to be wooed by that, it's fine. I mean, I'd be more concerned if it was, like, directly adjacent to residential, and then, you know, the, you know, what we're trying to guard against is the noise and just the, even if it's within code, but, I mean, the path of travel here is going back to San Fernando, or it's going down Broadway, so, all right, I guess I'm okay without that, without the condition of the, of the 12, of the midnight aspect of it.
That's amazing.
Mm-hmm.
And one more comment?
Please.
It was, the issue was raised about time, a time limit on a, on a use variance. I'm not sure it's prohibited, I, you know, I, I think like...
Oh, I always, I always thought it was.
Again, it's allowing a use, and a CUP allows a use, and it's, you want, because the, the use doesn't currently exist, our position would be that we could condition on to see, to make sure that that use operates in, in a way that's not a nuisance.
That, that makes this a done deal, then, absolutely, all right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, I'll close public hearing. I'm guessing that we have a sentiment for a condition for a time period on this?
Think so.
How many years would you suggest, Mr. Lee?
Well, initially, just to, you know, to try them out, you know, for their trial period, three years, and then, and after that, then grant them a longer period.
I, I, I mean, the only concern I have is, what if there's a new commission in three years, and they don't, they're, they're just going strictly by the, by the ordinance, and, you know, they might have different ideas on what to do.
That's why we have commissions.
We cannot control that. You know, the same question gets raised with inheritances.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, I, that's the way it works, the time changes. We were questioning now why the zoning was done the way it was.
The nightclub was...
Because time goes by.
That previous planning commission may be just mad as all get out.
There may be a reason to not grant it later.
But, I mean, we don't, we don't do that with other variances. We don't necessarily put a timeline on all, all variances we do, do we?
A lot, lots.
Check it out.
Because we had them about different years, 10 years, five years, two years.
Because you don't know what'll happen, this gentleman may sell it to someone else who's, who's less sincere.
Right. Well, can we maybe put a condition, if the ownership changes, then it can be brought up?
Well, that, yeah, but that's almost, that's almost too restrictive. I mean, suppose he sells next year, suddenly we're, I don't know.
Yeah, and then, but then, then you have, you know, you have to wait two years before it comes before the commission. You know what I mean?
I mean, I have no problem setting a timeframe of three years, and then they come back, share their case, if there have been any issues, it'll be addressed, if there haven't been, my guess is it would be approved for another three years or five years.
That's fine.
I, I think it would be, I mean, putting myself in someone else's shoes, I think it would be really difficult for other people sitting up here, when it's been granted before and they've demonstrated good neighbor aspects, it would be tough to throw it away.
To deny it.
So I, I like the three years. Other comments? I mean, three years is okay, two years, five years?
Three years works for me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not strongly against it or...
Hope for ten.
All right, that's another side of the, of the question. Excellent. All right, let's, let's push this motion, please.
I'm going to try, take a attempt at this thing, and see if we can do this. Did you also read off the A, B, C, D, or not? Okay, okay, so maybe, you know, going back to the, the condition A, taking Commissioner Landerga's comments, where strictest interpretation of the, of the code, you know, does not allow it, but, you know, that is, you know, that really applies to the, the bigger, really established, biller's establishment, rather than the small, you know, establishment like this, where limited, you know, in a limited space. In that context, I, you know, wanted to use the language that I think people do not have any problems with, so intent of the IMU zone is to allow and attract commercial activities that provide services to the community, and this biller qualifies in that category, and it says a variety of commercial uses are allowed in this zone. So I want to use that language to qualify under, under, under that A. And then B is that the uniqueness of this establishment is that there's none in that area, and, you know, it does provide unique service to the community. And the C is the, you know, granting of this variance will not materially detrimental to the public welfare, and it's not, it actually enhances and, I think, provides a good entertainment value to the community. And that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the objective of the ordinance, and I think that we can use the same thing that we did in the A. Similar argument. Okay? And the conditions that was, that has been read by the staff, that includes all the police department comments, city attorney's comments, and with the three years, and all the, I guess, you know, applicable, the conditions that, that we made suggestions here. So with that, those conditions, so I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of a current record relative to use variance case number PVAR 2010-015, located at 671 West Broadway, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby recommends approval with conditions of this said application, with all the comments that I just made.
Absent anything else, can we have a second?
Second.
Motion support, any further comments? CNN call roll, please.
Commissioner Landerga? No.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. On a vote of four to zero, oh, I'm sorry, four to one, the planning commission has approved use variance case PVAR 2010-015 at 671 West Broadway. I don't have my normal prepared statements, but there is an appeal period to this. Anybody not satisfied with the findings has, I believe, 10 days, 15? 15 days to appeal to the planning staff or city, again, when I don't have these prepared remarks, I'm just used to it.
They can submit an appeal application at the Permit Services Center, and the appeal goes to counsel.
And the application for said, for same is there, or is it at the clerk?
You can obtain a copy of the application at Permit Services Center.
All right, so, anyone unhappy with that can do so, otherwise, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Good evening.
Next item is tentative tract 65444. Its location is 460 West California Avenue, it's APN 5637-017-014. It is a request to develop a new four residential, uh, I'm sorry, four-unit residential condominium project on an approximately 6975 square foot site, located within the R1650 medium-high-density residential zone, and staff recommendation is that we approve the tentative tract 6544, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 16.16, final maps, and 16.28, new condominiums, Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and attached conditions. The applicant owner is Arudian Kozayin, and could we have staff overview?
Good evening, Chairman Kane and Commissioners. As you stated, the project before you is a proposal to subdivide a, a new development into, which consists of four units, into a, a for-sale condominium units. The property is located at 460 West California Avenue, and is bounded by Pacific Avenue and Columbus Avenue. The property is zone R1650, and is surrounded by other multifamily developments, including some lots that still contain single-family, but for the majority of these lots have been developed or redeveloped to accommodate multifamily developments. The project is in mid-construction at this point, it's nearing completion, and in reviewing the project, this development meets both the zoning code as well as its consistency with the general plan elements, and for that reason, staff is recommending approval of this application. The project itself consists of four units, two two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units, and all parking will be provided underground, and will consist of 11 spaces, including one guest parking, and the parking that are, that will be provided... one guest parking, and the parking that are, that will be provided meets the zoning code. So, with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions from the commission for staff?
Just one quick question, is this a normal sequencing?
Uh-
At this stage of the complete, the project's almost done.
Typically, no, but we have seen cases like this before where it's under construction, maybe not to, not this far along in the process, but where the project has started in its construction phase and the applicant is coming at a later stage to apply for the subdivision. But ideally, it would, preferably, it would be better to come forth with this application.
Be approved before you put a building on the site?
Yes, correct.
What would happen if we said no?
Then it will be rental units.
Ah.
But we've actually seen, we've actually seen the condo, condominium conversion late in the-
Yes, uh-huh, or come back as condo conversion, in this case, since it's not, it has, it's in, under construction and has not been occupied, it will be new condos, and not a condo conversion.
Not a conversion, right.
I have a, just a question, you know, one of the things that always stands out is you look at development standards versus proposed development features, and I just find it striking that the requirement for landscaping is 1,744 square feet, and remarkably, that is the exact square footage of the proposed development, and I'd like to know who verified that. Who, who actually took the time to make sure that what they said is what it is?
Actually, staff does the verification, and when the project went to design review, that was verified as well, actually, it's a little bit more higher than what is stated in the subdivision application, but I just went along with, with this number in this case.
Okay, well, it's good to know somebody actually checked it, thank you very much. Other questions for staff at this time? Okay, the applicant is represented, I presume, by Mr. Martorosian, we have not seen, we haven't seen you for so long, sir.
Yes, good evening, sir, nice to see you all, yes, we should blame the economy that slowed everything down.
Or credit.
But anyhow, we are here for this project, the reason that we started kind of late on this project is the original owner has faltered on the project, and we have a new owner that just came in almost six, seven months ago, so that's what we are starting kind of late on this project. I don't have any, anything more to add to it, we, we already read the conditions and we concur with the staff findings, and we will fully comply with all the conditions. If you have any question, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Questions for the applicant's representative, seeing none? Any remarks from staff? Closing remarks?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
You know, I just wanted to ask that the commission had one condition, and that is that if the, if the project, if any of the units are leased out to tenants before they get approval of the final map and, and record, recordation of the final map, that they have to apply for condo conversion map. We've had a couple of projects with that, got the tentative map, and then before they got the final map, they moved tenants in, and they were sort in this limbo land, did they have to apply for condo conversion or not, and so, I think just for clarity's sake in the future, we're gonna add a condition that is very explicit, that they have to record the final map before they move any tenants in there, and in the event they, a lot, because of the market, a lot of these condos got mapped, and then they just rented them out, that if they're gonna move tenants in there, that they, they have to record the final map before they do that, otherwise, they're gonna go into the condo conversion world, and that's gonna be a separate map that's gonna have to come again, I'm not sure if it comes to the planning commissioner or the, the hearing officer, but it's a separate approval, and we just want to make sure that that's clear in the conditions.
Very good.
So, I'll, I can, I can give you the wording for that, if that's something the commission wants to do.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure we want to include that as a condition. Ms. Landerga?
I'd like to move-
Well, hang on, we hadn't, we hadn't closed the public hearing yet.
Actually, I-
Closing remarks from staff? Other conditions, I'm guessing?
Thank you for that, a newer, new condition from Mr. Garcia, but I would like to point out to a mistake on page 10, so, in terms of the numbering, staff proposed 42 condition, but with the new one that just-
Forty, forty, forty-one.
That was just added, it will be 43 conditions total.
I can't believe you did that.
Oh, I see, forty, forty, I see, okay.
Tell us the truth, you did that intentionally and you see if we'd catch it, didn't you?
I just noticed it today, just, thank you, but otherwise, I do not have anything else to add.
All right, absent any questions for staff, we'll close public hearing, I suspect somebody would like to make a motion. Ms. Landerga?
I would like to move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 65444, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 65444 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, chapter 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 42, 43, am I correct?
Yes, 43.
The 43 additional conditions listed below, and the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings a fact.
And, again, the 43rd was legal?
The 43rd was legal.
Second. Motion for a call roll, please.
Commissioner Landerga?
Aye.
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 Aye, and a vote of five to zero, tentative tract 65444, I'm sorry, 65444 has been approved. We'll move on to agenda item C, Use and Standards Variance Case PVAR 2010-021, the location is 2820 Sycamore Avenue and 37 through, 3743 through 3755 Loc Resenta Avenue, the applicant is the Southern California Presbyterian Homes, and the description is an application for use variance to allow construction of a 698 square foot dining room expansion of a senior housing facility, and a standards variance to exceed the allowable floor area for the district located at 2820 Sycamore Avenue and 3743 through 3755 Loc Resenta Avenue in the R1 low-density residential zone, floor area District 2. The recommendation from staff is that the planning commission approve the proposed project, subject to the conditions of approval in the motion prepared by staff. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, as mentioned, this is a Use and Standards Variance Case Number PVAR 2010-021, located at 2820 Sycamore Avenue and 3743 through 3755 Loc Resenta Avenue. Pursuant to chapter 30.43 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, the applicant has filed a use variance application to allow 698 square foot to an existing dining room facility within a senior housing facility in the R1 low-density residential zone, where senior housing uses are not permitted. In addition, a standards variance is requested to exceed the allowable floor area for the district. The maximum allowable floor area, based on a lot area of 185,130 square feet, is 21,513 square feet, which is 12% of the lot. The applicant is proposing 32,119 square feet, which is 17% of the lot. Subject property as mentioned is within Sycamore and Loc Resenta. The senior housing complex has occupied the property since 1941, it's approximately four and a half acres, and is comprised of nine residential buildings, one main office, one laundry, and one dining building. There are both one and two-story buildings on the property. Vehicle access is from Sycamore Avenue, which has two driveways, and one driveway off of Loc Resenta. Buildings are dispersed throughout the property, with 121,526 square feet of landscaping, and 48,153 square feet of paving, parking, and walkways. The dining building is located on the southern portion of the property, and is approximately 250 feet from Sycamore, approximately 460 feet from Loc Resenta, and 81 feet from the rear property line. The subject property as mentioned is located in an R1 zone, is surrounded by single-family residential developments. The proposed project is categorically exempt for environmental review, and staff did not receive any major comments or concerns from any of the other departments, city departments. Would you like me to run through the findings for the use variance, although you may have those down?
Yeah, I, no, you mean what we need to do?
Yes.
No, that's not required. Just for purposes of reference and, and for the record, you provide those as part of the staff report?
Yes, I have provided those as part of the staff report, as well as staff's analysis of that, and staff is recommending approval of the subject proposal for the use and standards variance, and feels that the project can comply with the four findings that are required for the variances, and I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Landerga?
Ah, Mr. Collins, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Oh, she's warming him up.
I called him today and asked him questions already, so I have another question. In a previous variance, a tree plan was required for all of the trees on the property, was that submitted when this addition was proposed, to make sure that it was not infringing on any of those trees that were part of it?
This addition that we have before us tonight?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking if there was one submitted for the addition that we're talking about tonight?
Yes.
There was not, but we can add a condition to this if the commission would like, that many would have to get approval anyhow from the city arborists prior to any building permits, if the commission would like to add that necessary protection be made for any of the indigenous trees on the property, it might be worth the commission considering.
Yeah, because from the site plan, it clearly looks like you're impacting drip lines and so on.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Potentially.
But it's not prepared in a manner that makes it easy to determine. I have another question. Typically, when a variance is here, and you exceed your floor area ratio, what is the limit? I mean, is the sky the limit? How many times can you do this? I mean, it's, it's 12%, 17, when do you stop?
Well, this particular lot, as you can see from the drawings, being four acres, and also the configuration of it, you've got a floor area which is, is there to maximize or minimize the amount of, of scale and massing of the buildings that are there, this lot is actually four acres, and where the percentages, you know, reflect what's out there, the buildings that are there are dispersed through the property, so in addition of 698 square feet in this example, is not, in staff's opinion, not going to affect scale or massing of the project.
But, I mean, if you keep adding 600 and something each time, you're continually increasing a non-conforming condition, and, and I guess the question I don't see answered in here is, for 70 years, people have eaten, been eating in the dining hall comfortably, and now it's not comfortable? What has, what has brought about this need for a new square footage?
I have the same question, I suspect we'll let the applicant weigh in as opposed to staff.
Okay, all right.
But you echoed my question. Anything else for staff?
I have a similar question.
Okay. My only comment, I'm sure it's a typo, but on page three of the staff report under analysis of the Use and Standards Variance Request, the third paragraph, last line, you have intensification would include an increase in number of bedrooms or additional dwelling, I'm sure you meant would not.
No.
No?
No, in this case, what we were, staff was trying, actually, that was mentioned earlier in the day, what was mentioned, or meant by that is, if this were, the addition of floor area in this case was not to any of the units that are out there, and was not increasing the number of bedrooms, and if this were in fact an addition of the actual living area of the units, or increase in the number of bedrooms, then staff would consider that more of an intensification, because you're potentially looking at more residents being allowed out there.
Well, we're parsing words, but I would argue that this is an intensification, because you are adding square footage, but it's an intensification that would not include an increase. I hear what you're saying, it's, but, thank you for explaining why you worded it that way. Okay. The end result, I understand what you're saying. All right, thank you. Anything else for staff? We have one speaker card, it's Orest Dolinyuk.
Yes.
Did I actually pronounce that correctly?
Dolinyuk.
No.
Dolinyuk, but it's-
Well, I'm sure that's what I said.
Yes, that's what I heard, so.
You want this granted, right? That's exactly what I said, I understand.
It's what I heard. Good evening, once again, for the record, my name is Orest Dolinyuk, I'm here on behalf of SCPH and 12 Oaks Lodge, we have several representatives from, from the home office as well, if there are any additional questions, they, they'll be available to answer them. First off, I'd like to, to thank staff for their work on this, we have reviewed the, the staff report, the, the draft findings that staff has made, as well as their conditions, and we have no objections to anything that's been said in the staff report, or any of the proposed conditions. Specifically, I think, it's been asked why we need the additional 700 square feet, I think it's simply a matter of, first off, the area that currently there is a, is a patio area, it's simply not being utilized to the full extent by the residents, and we feel that if it's enclosed, that area will be better utilized by the residents. And unlike any property owner who has a property that is older, there are, you know, various changes that occur over time, how pro, how we may use the facility, how the programs occur on-site, and it simply provides a better utilization of the facility, and a better utilization of the property for the residents on-site. I think there are clearly various aspects of this property that make it unique, and that the findings can be met, given its overall size of four and a half acres, it's much larger than anything you would typically find in a single-family residential zone. I think the code clearly, particularly the FAR requirements, is geared towards a single-family lot and a single-family home, to avoid the problems of, say, a mansionization or a very large, single-family home that overwhelms a neighborhood that may push onto neighboring properties in side yards. In this instance, while we, yes, we do exceed the F, floor ratio, I think it's always exceeded the FAR, since prior to it becoming a part of the city of Glendale. When you look at another, I think, important number, which is the lot coverage requirement of the R1 zone, under that lot coverage requirement, I think we would be allowed to have up to 70,000 square feet, or in excess of 70,000 square feet of, of structure, excuse me, structure on the property, and we are well below that, we are not near, not even at 27,000 square feet. So, when you look at lot coverage, we could have significantly more, I think it's that, it's a little bit of that dilemma of FAR where we exceed it, but floor, the, the actual lot coverage, we are well below what would be permitted. And I think, given the FAR rules, and how they apply to a single-family home, clearly we're a very different use, and I think that's what makes us unique, and why the findings can be met for a variance. As staff mentioned, this site will, this addition will not be visible from any public right-of-way, I think the only place it would be visible, where if a neighbor got up and stood at his rear fence and looked over his fence, and at that point, he'd still be 80 feet away from the actual addition we're going to. There is an existing building on-site that's permitted and legal, we do not exceed the height limit of that building, the roof line, the ridge line of that building, so, in essence, we think it's, it's a very minor innocuous use, it provides some benefit to the residents who live there, gives them some additional, you know, more usable space for the dining room, for their recreational uses that occur in that dining room, and it doesn't impact on any of the surrounding neighboring properties, so we feel that the, the variance findings can be met, we have submitted written findings, fact to the record, staff has also prepared them, so, with that, unless you have any additional questions, I would simply ask for the commission's approval of this application, we'll be happy to answer any questions if you do have them.
Mr. Lee?
I know Commissioner Landerga kinda asked that question already, and the reason that, why we're asking about your intention of, you know, adding, you know, this square footage, was that you gave us a drawing of a site plan with a black box, normally, we get, we get more than that, you know, normally, you know, you'll, let's say, lay out dining room tables there, and then your need, so, you know- out dining room tables there, and then your need, you know, suddenly grew, so that you're taking shifts to, let's say, serve the people there, or utilize that facility, thus, you need this more square footage to put dining tables there, or something, that type of layout, you know, would have been helpful. So, you know, my question was along the same mind, you know, what purpose, you know, what does this serve? You also mentioned recreational, you know, what are you going to put there? You know, why should we, you know, grant you this additional square footage, just, you know, because I want this square footage here? Or what is your purpose of, you know, building this up? I guess, you know, that was kind of...
Well, I mean, the purpose, as anyone who has a building, a facility, a dining room in their single-family home, as needs change, a 70-year-old building doesn't necessarily, you know, a property that's 70 years old doesn't necessarily meet the same needs of today's residents, and it's simply a matter of space, and a better utilization, better layout. Somewhat, it's a fluid and dynamic change. None of the tables are set in stone, they're not, you know, they're not cemented into the ground. It is a dining room facility. Today, there's, you know, four tables that have four chairs around them, tomorrow, they could have, you know, make one large table for eight or six people. It's just a matter, this is a residential facility, in the same manner that you have in a private home, you live, and you arrange your table however you may feel. Although this is an institutional use, in the sense that it's run and they provide services for the residents there, this is a residential use, not different than you would have in an R1 zone. So, to say specifically, this is how we're going to configure the tables, while we could provide a plan to say this is how it is, it's not necessarily how it's going to stay, because it's a fluid, it's a fluid function.
Because I noticed when I was out there, actually, the distance between the tables you set was quite, you know, the distance apart, meaning that you're not really, you know, short of, you know, space requirements, because, you know, because, I mean, if you had more tables really close, you know, to each other, and things like that, then, wow, you know, these guys are really utilizing their space, they need more room. But you had those tables set so far apart, you know, you could put another table in between.
Correct.
So, that's why, you know, you raise the question, why do they need additional space?
Well, I think it's to utilize kind of the patio space that exists, you know, residents aren't going outside, to kind of incorporate and provide that additional space to the residents within the dining room. And like I say, it's fluid, and while today, the residents, when you were there, you know, didn't need that configuration, that's not to say, in a day, in a week, in a month, that they won't, you know, the configuration of the tables won't change. I think what's important as part of this application is, we're not intensifying the use in the sense of, we're not adding residents, we're not adding additional staff here, which is, I think, typically the concern we see in this use in a single-family residential zone, which is to say, the number of residents, the number of bedrooms that are there are staying exactly the same. Those things aren't changing. This simply allows Southern California Presbyterian Homes and 12 Oaks Lodge to give some additional flexibility to the residents who are there, to work with them, to provide a more usable space for them.
Question. Go ahead.
My biggest concern is that in previous, in the previous approvals, there was a tree survey that was required, and that tree survey is not included, and the way this is shown with those large oaks there, it appears to be impacting, and those are in direct violation of previous ones. That, to me, is a big issue.
No.
It's not resolved with words.
Okay, well, we're happy to get a condition that says we need to provide that, you know, we have no objection to adding a condition which states that whatever required tree plan needs to be submitted to stay out of any drip line or any encroachment area, we're happy to accept a condition to that effect.
But what if you can't put in the addition because of that? Because you can't cut the oak trees, according to this.
Well, we will comply with...
Relocate, I suppose.
It's true.
I mean, we have looked at, it is our belief, at this time, that we do not impact any of the trees. And once again, we're happy to accept a condition which states we will not impact them, and we will submit any plans or necessary permits, you know, at the time, at the time we're obtaining building permits, or prior to obtaining any building permits. We have no objection to that condition. We submitted those documents, which we believed were, or which we were told were required at the time of submission. I know we have done tree surveys in the past on the property, and it's my understanding from SCPH that we don't, we don't believe we currently do impact anything.
Again, that's important to us, because you are adding square footage, and if you're adding square footage at the risk of destroying the park-like settings that you have, you're kind of defeating probably your goal for the community as well.
No.
That's where we're coming from on that idea.
No, and as I said, we have no objection to adding a condition that states that we will submit a plan to that effect, to make sure that you're satisfied and see that staff can sign off on. And as I said, I believe that the area where currently proposing this addition is an enclosed patio, or, excuse me, is a patio, it's not enclosed, and doesn't impact any, you know, we're not going to be putting in any footings or anything. It should impact...
However, in our argument here, you will have to get machinery there to put in a footing, to put in a building, and there are oak trees there, so you will impact them. So, to me, I see an issue in the location of that, and how you would get any, even a bobcat in there. So, I see an impact. It's not just what you see on a drawing, it's the whole property. How you would access it, how would you affect those? It is, you don't just go in, and it comes up like a Lego set. It has footings that are put in, it has hard equipment that comes out there, and the drip lines, and how would you do that? To me, it's not resolved in any of the material that we have.
Once again, I don't think we've, there is access to our site from driveways of both Sycamore and La Crescenta that are existing driveways. There is a large parking area in front of this building that is paved. I believe there, to specifically tell you have we staged or planned the construction, I can't tell you we have, because we're not at that stage. Clearly, we needed to apply for this permit first. But, once again, I believe the existing codes prohibit us from impacting those things, and we will comply with any, with all code requirements with regard to protecting any existing trees that are out there. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's an arborist in Glendale who will come out and check our, you know, check the facility prior. We're happy to have him come to the site and look at it. I mean, we can...
Or her.
Him or her, excuse me. And, you know, I know that, on other sites I've worked on, they've put out protective fencing within the drip line that you can't extend into. I think as part of any construction, you know, prior to any construction staging, happy to do that.
As part of the 678, if that's the square footage that you're going to enclose, are you remodeling the kitchen, or is this just the open dining area?
This is just the open dining area.
Okay. Is there another point of assembly for the residents, or is this where they would assemble?
This is...
Do they have, you know, card rooms?
The point of assembly.
This is it, so it's dining slash, do you do it for other things, programs?
Community rooms, like I say, if people want to sit around a table and play a board game, or do something, that's where they could do it as well, yes.
Currently?
Yes.
So, okay.
But the expansion...
And part of what's going on right now is, what we received in our packet had the site plan, we didn't have necessarily all the drawings.
That's why, that's why I made that comment, I had a black box, I didn't have the drawings.
Oh, like I say, and I was unaware what...
No, no problem. Somebody had it, but we didn't, so we're, you know, we're catching up on a few things here.
No, that's fair enough. Like I say, I think the number that's, that at least jumps to mind, if I may still, is that total lot coverage area. As I stated, under the R1 zone, I think, under the size of this lot, we could go to 74,000 square feet.
Not to be rude, we've heard that.
Very good.
It's okay. Any other questions at this moment? All right, there is a rebuttal period. If something pops up, you'll have some additional time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else? Not for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Further remarks from staff? We have no other speaker cards. Further remarks from staff? Don't go very far, your rebuttal's about to start.
Just in relationship to the indigenous trees that, you know, typically would not be able to get a building permit until whatever protective measures are shown to the city arborist, that the applicant would be able to not only protect the trees, the roots, the drip lines, everything to the city arborist's satisfaction, prior to any sort of stepping off from the zoning staff, in addition to any building section sign-off. So, regardless of any development that has indigenous trees on the property, that would be the process. Just as a point of clarification.
If you choose to, you may consider continuing this to a date in the future, to get a tree report now, that would help.
Sure, that's required, but we can talk about it in a bit. Anything else from staff?
That's it from staff, thank you.
All right, we're now in your rebuttal time. Has any other questions come up? Anything you want to direct? Further challenges, observations? Anything you'd like to share in terms of anything you've heard that you need to rebut?
No, thank you for your consideration, and available if you reopen the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any closing remarks? I suspected as much. We'll close public hearing under deliberations. Who'd like to lead off on their thoughts?
I'll start.
Mr. Sheets, thank you.
For me, this, this, this location brings back memories from another lifetime, but I remember doing phone work in this area many years ago, this facility, so... I just think it's a unique establishment. It was put in place years before codes occurred, and, you know, it's evolved into something that I, I just think it's the type facility that is needed in the community, is the type facility that our community should be doing everything it can to not only support this facility, but others like it. I think it would be a real add to our community. And if they were remodeling the whole, the whole area, adding new buildings and such, I would have a lot more concern, but for the size of space that we're talking about, and knowing that there are measures in place that will, at least in my mind so far, address the concerns that have been brought up by other commissioners, it seemed to me, I do agree that there weren't enough specifics, and there wasn't enough detail in the package that would have maybe answered all the questions as far as how expansive and what the use was, but I still think it's small enough that as the process would go forward, and go into more detail, and plans would be drawn up, issues about the indigenous trees and other things could be addressed. So, I just, I'm not seeing any major problems at this point, and haven't heard anything that makes me feel otherwise.
Thank you. Mr. Sheets, who'd like to be next?
I'm good with the project, you know, as long as the comments from Commissioner Landerga is incorporating to the concerns are addressed, I'm good. No comments.
Thank you.
You don't want to be last? I don't have any major issues either with the project, so I would be supportive as well.
Well, I think this is a unique site, I like the property. I had a friend who was in residence there. The concern I have is that, you know, we apply the incremental extending of a, you know, a non-conforming use over time, over and over again, and it seems to just create a snowball effect, and under other circumstances, we would be quite harsh with somebody who is doing this. And we're using the four acres, and if we were applying this or that as a reason, I mean, I'd love to use that for my own house. If I were, you know, going to use this as commercial instead of residential, I could do this. And to me, that, those aren't valid reasons. The first finding of fact which says the strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unnecessary hardship, not only on the operator, but on the individual residents, doesn't ring true, because it's four acres, you've already extended it, how, you know, to me, I don't see that's an unnecessary hardship. It's an unused area that you want to use. You know, and I have a problem when I don't see that finding ringing true to me. And, you know, the proposed addition of less than 700 square feet, just because it's a large area, doesn't mean that it is actually, I think, a hardship. I don't see the hardship here. And I think it's a great facility, and I see that, you know, the FAR requirement is 21,513, and already, it's 10,000 square feet over that. And every time, you know, why can't we just say that we can continue all non-conforming uses? Because that's what we're doing here, over and over, and continuing it. To me, I would have a hard time supporting it for that reason first, or second reason is, the plans that are submitted don't read to me, well, what we got, and I mean, I can see these are actually better than what we got, but I have a real concern with the previous conditions not even being brought up by staff to say, well, we had an oak, we had a tree survey here, we'll need that tree survey to make sure that it's not in compliance. Even if we like a project, and we think that we can put it through because we think it's a good use, I still think there are issues here that have not been resolved, that make it easy for me, or would I be able to support it for those reasons unless, I mean, I don't think I could just continually, I mean, I don't know where we stop adding more and more square footage to a non-conforming use. That's the dilemma that I see here. If I'm going to impose this on somebody in a hillside, and I'm going to impose this on somebody who's in a flat area, and I'm not going to impose it here because it's a use I like, I just don't see that a fair application of the code for me to follow.
Okay, well, I think, you know, I think at some point, you're absolutely right. There is a point in time where, you know, the cliche of the straw breaking the camel's back. This site has clearly gone beyond, you know, the code in terms of floor area ratio and so on. So, we have every right to be concerned, and we have every right to ask the tough questions, you know, why do you need it? You know, what are you doing with it? You know, what's, you know, is there a hidden agenda? You know, what's going on here? Is this the first shoe in some other, you know, in some other effort? And so, we're reacting with alarm over, you know, and we've seen it in the past, this little, you know, stepping stone approach to something larger. That said, you know, I'm comfortable, and in other cases, we've also been sensitive, somebody that wants to do something, as long as it doesn't impact someone else, you know, whether it's, you know, a small, a couple of added feet in the back of their house that they're enclosing, whatever it happens to be, as long as it's not seen in the neighborhood, as long as it's not impacting their neighbors, as long as it's, you know, giving them the quiet, beneficial use of their own property, that's actually been a defensible rationale on our part. So, even though they've gone way beyond floor ratios and stuff, given the specifics of this particular effort, I don't have a problem. If this had been along the street, if this had been adding bedrooms, if this had been adding stories, if this had been something, let's say, more elaborate, or in a more visible spot, you, I think you would have far more difficulty, certainly with this commissioner, and I suspect with the board as a whole. So, that said, fundamentally, I can make the findings, and I can, I can support a motion that would approve the variants. Other comments? Additional comments? Thoughts? Ms. Landerga?
Is there a condition you can put in that...
No more?
Correct.
No more?
No more.
No, you can't.
I don't think so.
No, you can't.
I don't think so.
Well, yeah, it would, this would be just applying to this...
One would assume that the FAR would be the no more.
Yeah, the really we meet, the really we mean at this time...
Yes.
Maybe the next commission would feel that way.
Well, again, it just depends what would that project be?
Sure.
You know? You know, again, if this was a different project, our, our comments would be different. So I'm just looking at the specifics of what's in front of us, where it is, what it is. I've had my say on it. Further comments? Anything from sta, I'll invite the opportunity to reopen the public hearing if staff has conditions that they want to add that haven't or have been brought up. I don't see that, so we'll continue with deliberations. Absent further comments, I would invite a motion, please.
I'll move, I'll do that.
Mr. Sheets?
I move that upon review and consideration of all the materials and exhibits of the current record relative to the use and standards variance, number PVAR 2010-021, located at 2820 Sycamore and 3743 through 3755 La Crescenta, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, the planning commission hereby approves said use and standard variance case number PVAR 2010-021 in accord with the findings set forth below.
Second?
Motion support? No further comments? Please call roll.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye, on a vote of four to one, the planning commission has approved use in standards variance case PVAR 2010-021. As noted in the previous case, anyone not happy with the decision has 15 days to appeal with the information available in the city offices. That said, let's move on to agenda item eight, planning department updates.
Last night, the council introduced a motion to change the name of the community planning department to the community development department, and if they adopt it next week, on January 6th, we will become the community development department. And then also, for upcoming meetings, at our next meeting, we have four items scheduled. We are planning to be dark and have no meeting on January 5th.
Well, we have the 15th, but then on January 5th we'll be dark, you say?
Right, January 15, or January 5th we'll be dark. On January 19th, right now, we have three items scheduled, and that's as far out as the scheduling goes.
On December 15th, how many items?
We have four.
Four items?
Actually, you know what, we have four items scheduled, but one of them won't be heard there, we just had the appeal that was scheduled for 2612 Honolulu, the mix, that was just withdrawn. So there's, the agenda will have four items on it, but we'll actually only hear, have hearings on, on three.
All variance cases?
We have one use variance, one tentative parcel map, and one SR zone review, a wireless in the SR zone. So the next meeting will not have an appeal.
So we'll be the design review board for that last one, won't we?
Yes.
Ms. Landrigan?
I just want to state that I will not be here for the 15th, I regret, I'll be in another meeting-
More fun.
In San Diego.
That sounds more fun.
Come with me.
Comments from planning commissioners?
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Lee.
They mentioned that they, they're changing the department name, does that affect our name as well, or?
No.
Development Commission.
It'll still be the planning commission.
So, I want to know what's the cost to change out everyone's business cards, and all the plaques and all the names?
I think we're planning on having people use up the business cards they have, not to sort of new ones.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, there we go.
Mr. Hagani accepted.
I, yes, I suspect that the county and city of Los Angeles could learn from the cost-saving measures being invoked here in Glendale, blah, blah, blah. Any other comments? I'm sorry?
Especially DWP.
Yes.
What is, I mean, what is it change, is it just a change in name, or is there a change in staff and additions being made to the department?
Yes, the, we're being merged actually with what had been the community redevelopment and housing department, so that, really, I think the intent is to have all aspects of community development, including redevelopment, economic development, and housing, joined with planning, building, and neighborhood services for, you know, a lot of obvious advantages, like a more holistic and coordinated approach to things.
This title, you didn't like all those titles that came with it, huh? With all the different departments?
It's a super department.
Yes. Yeah, his, his little square is like three times bigger than everyone else on the organizational chart.
Just keeps getting bigger. Separate sheet.
Any, any-
Yeah, I have just a couple more. I brought up this issue, the story polls, last time we had the wireless project come up, was that ever implemented or anything, I mean, since we're going to have another case coming before us in two weeks, because I think that would have been really helpful, see that, when, when, to get a better idea on the type of wireless things being put up.
You wanted to see a story poll for the wi, for where the wireless facility would be?
Yeah, well, you know, how tall it would be, the actual structure, because we had that issue come up, and it was kind of hard to figure out on that one poll that was being required on exactly how big it was going to be, and we, without a point of reference, it was really difficult.
That was adjacent to the baseball field?
Yeah, the one adjacent to the baseball field. Anyway, I had brought it up back then, and then staff said that they would look into it for future upcoming issues, so I just wanted to see what happened.
Well, I mean, we would not be able to require that absent the change of the code, so, as you know, right now, we've been reviewing a whole bunch of changes, proposed changes to the code with the zoning code advisory group, and some of you have attended some of those meetings, and that issue has been considered there and will be brought forward to the commission when we bring those code changes. I'm not completely certain, this next application may be a co-location on an existing facility, but I don't, I can't, I know we have one of those in the works, I'm not sure if it's that exact application or not.
Anyway, I would-
It may be a moot point for some applications.
Strongly in favor of that. And then, one more thing, really quick, I was just reading this commission magazine that I've been getting now, and one thing that was interesting that had been worked into other communities is like workshops for developers, or like a public briefing on things that have been changed, like, for example, the parking requirements that now, we're now changing, is there something that Glendale plans to do as far as like public outreach to developers, so we can definitely take advantage of the type of changes we're doing in the downtown and the city area?
There certainly is outreach plan for that effort, mobility planning effort that you described, and as well as some proposed changes we're thinking of to the South Brand specific plan zoning, so I, yes, absolutely, we, that's part of our normal course of business, and we have major changes affecting commercial operations, sure.
Mr. Lee?
I do have one question or comment. I've been part of LA County, LADC EV, electrical vehicle deployment program, and they're already, you know, getting the blueprint out to, I guess, develop the plan for charging stations, EV service facilities, and so on. Does Glendale have anything like that in your future plan to carbonate, you know, any EV that, you never know, you know, you might have, you know, all these people, all of a sudden, buying all these EVs due to, you know, advancement in the batteries that they use. I'm strongly thinking about buying one, but then, you know, my worry is that where I'm going to plug it in? You know, will I have a charging station in my home?
You only need it half the time when you're going uphill.
We don't have any plans to add it to the zoning code, I know that there have been some changes, I'm not sure on that exact topic, but I think that the new state green building code has something which is at least tangentially related to that, and it may be required through that, but we can certainly always consider that in zoning code as well, yes. Although we don't have any immediate plans.
I guess what I was suggesting is that, you know, instead of reacting, I think something, the category or the field that I think you could take proactive approach to.
There are state- adhered to- and discussing- and discussing- Got it. In addition to implementing the smart meter process and familiarizing the public with that process, they've expanded into other areas, and one of them happens to be the use of electronic, electric cars and other type of sources, and a component of that is to, to start developing locations within the city, maybe on Brand and Central and other locations, so it is being addressed, there's no specific detail or codes at the moment, but my guess is we evolve into the green state and get a direction from, or information from the state, and then carry our thoughts forward, we're going to start having plans and ideas and concept, concepts on how to do that, and as you buy your car and other people buy them, there'll be added importance to having that done quickly.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Move that we adjourn.
Aye, suggest for adjournment.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.